Yeah, did you join well?
Mike, are you ready for us?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for October 17. We're a little late because we had an executive session. Sorry to keep everybody waiting. We remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded and we also take a moment at the beginning of our meetings to appreciate our troops who are serving around the globe. Thank you. And we'll just mention that Jean Kingsbury unfortunately died in the past week, I think it was, and she was just a huge, huge fixture in our town. So our condolences go out to Bill and the rest of the Kingsbury family. The town will miss Jean. Such a kind lady. We start with a public hearing at seven o'clock. Section 12 Retail Liquor License Request for Mother Anna's Inc. at 19 North Meadows Road, Medfield. I've read such great reviews about this restaurant. I'm looking forward to information.
If I may.
If you bring a menu, I'm going to be hungry. Don't do this.
Bring a menu. My name is Carolyn Conway.
Hold on one second, please. Can you just declare the hearing open?
I declare the hearing open. The other thing is, in order for people at home to hear, you need to use one of the microphones.
I wanted to give you these. There are the menus in the floor plans. Oh, great, thank you. And I, if you will, thank you for having us. My name is Carolyn Conway. I'm representing the applicant tonight and I have with me Mr. Michael Caparella, who is the president of Mother Anna's and he is going to be the manager of the Section 12 license. As you can imagine, this is Mother Anna's of the North End has been a fixture on Hanover Street since 1931. And Michael and his particular branch of the family took over in the 90s. Michael has been there literally since he was a young man. He is a graduate of Johnson &amp; Wales. He and his brother are both going to be equally chefs running the restaurant. Unfortunately, his brother John could not be with us tonight. He's celebrating his honeymoon in Aruba.
We'll hold that against him. He's established priorities clearly.
And as you can see from the floor plan, this is the former Papagino's space at 18 North Meadows Road. We did bring, I sent it to Brittany, an artist rendition, a little tape of what our architect has designed.
Do you want to play it?
Like, because it doesn't have any sound or anything, just while I'm talking. The licensed premises will consist of basically two rooms. One, when you walk into the premises, you can see from the floor plan, there will be a small to-go area so that people can come in on their way home, order and go. And then there will be a bar with 17 seats. This is what you're seeing now is what we, and it's not the end result, but this is what we're envisioning, is the formal dining room, which will be on the right-hand side. The total capacity will be 109 seats. And we're going to do, besides the construction of the bar, we're getting a brand-new kitchen, state-of-the-art, and the bathrooms are being redone. We're also, and you can see from the ceilings that we're doing, we're going to do a lot of soundproofing in the ceilings so that there won't be any noise going out. And we envision that it's, as I said, it's going to be the fine dining on the right and a bar seating on the left. And you'll see that we also asked for a CV license tonight and an entertainment license. There will be some TVs in the bar area. And you can see on that where the to-go area will be, right there. With the menus that you can see, it's going to be traditional fine dining Italian restaurant with seasonal flair, meaning that we expect that we'll be sourcing local things around this time of year. You'll be seeing some pumpkin raviolis, some chestnut raviolis, that type of thing. But then going into the spring and summer, seeing, as I said, more local flavors. We do anticipate that we're going to have a lot of salads and things like that during the summertime. And we also are in talks with a pastry chef to bring somebody in to do some traditional Italian pastries, cannolis, once a week so that that will be, you know, that will be something that we'll be able to offer. The hours of operation, we do plan on having lunch. We're having, going through dinner. And then after nine o'clock at night, we're anticipating that we would have a Bar Bites menu or something that along the lines of lighter fare. We want everybody who is in the place to be eating at all times. With respect to a closing hour, we're asking for a little bit later closing hour, mostly because of what we anticipate to be private parties. We would like to get, you know, if somebody wanted to have a shower or somebody had a birthday party or whatever. But we anticipate that our closing time will be consistent with the other restaurants in the area, normally around 10 or 11 o'clock at night. We just want to have that option to do that. So the family is coming in. We have all of our homemade salad dressings and everything ready to go. Our construction, right now, we have met with everybody. As you see, we have the floor plan, we have our general contractor, and we're anticipating that we would have an opening in March of next year. We'd like it to be a little bit sooner, but our contractor tells us that March is the realistic date as to when we're going to open. So Michael is here. He's ready to answer any questions that you might have with respect to the specifics of the operation. We're looking forward to coming into this area. We believe that this, it's going to be just a wonderful combination for everybody involved.
I haven't used the word "super excited."
Thank you so much. Gus, do you want to start?
Yes, my first comment is I'm glad to see you're moving in, so I'm happy to see it and welcome.
Thank you.
I can't say I've been to Mother Anna's in Boston, but everything that people who have been around here have had to say.
Yeah, did you join well?
Mike, are you ready for us? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for October seventeen. We're a little late because we had an executive session. Sorry to keep everybody waiting. We remind everybody that the meeting is being recorded. And we also take a moment at the beginning of our meetings to appreciate our troops who are serving around the globe. Thank you. And we'll just mention that Jean Kingsbury unfortunately died in the past week, I think it was. And she was just a huge, huge fixture in our town. So our condolences go out to Bill and the rest of the Kingsbury family. The town will miss Jean. Such a kind lady. We start with a public hearing at seven o'clock. Section twelve Retail Liquor License Request for Mother Anna's Inc. at nineteen North Meadows Road, Medfield. I've read such great reviews about this restaurant. I'm looking forward to the information.
If you bring a menu, I'm going to be hungry. Don't do that.
I ran a menu. My name is Carolyn Conway.
Hold on, hold one second, please. Can you just declare the hearing open?
I declare the hearing open. The other thing is, in order for people at home to hear, you need to use one of the microphones.
I just wanted to give you these.
Okay, thank you.
There are the menus in the floor plans.
Oh, great, thank you.
And I, if you will, thank you for having us. My name is Carolyn Conway. I'm representing the applicant tonight. And I have with me Mr. Michael Caparella, who is the president of Mother Anna's. And he is going to be the manager of the section twelve license. As you can imagine, this is Mother Anna's of the North End has been a fixture on Hanover Street since nineteen thirty-one. And Michael and his particular branch of the family took over in the nineties. Michael has been there literally since he was a young man. He is a graduate of Johnson &amp; Wales. He and his brother are both going to be equally chefs running the restaurant. Unfortunately, his brother John could not be with us tonight. He's celebrating his honeymoon in Aruba. And we just so it's...
We'll hold out against him. He's established priorities clearly.
And as you can see from the floor plan, this is the former Papagino's space at eighteen North Meadows Road. We did bring, I sent it to Brittany, an artist rendition, a little tape of the, of what our architect has designed.
Do you want to, do you want to play it?
I'd love it, yeah.
Like, because it doesn't have any sound or anything, just while, while I'm talking. The licensed premises will consist of basically two rooms. One, when you walk into, into the premises, you can see from the floor plan, there will be a small-to-go area so that people can come in on their way home, order, and go. And then there will be a bar with seventeen seats. This is what you're seeing now is what we, and it's not the, the end result, but this is what we're envisioning, is the formal dining room, which will be on the right-hand side. The total capacity will be a hundred and nine seats. And we're going to do, besides the construction of the bar, we're going, getting a brand-new kitchen, state-of-the-art, and the bathrooms are being redone. We're also, and you can see from the ceilings that we're doing, we're going to do a lot of soundproofing in the ceiling so that there won't be any noise going, going out. And we envision that it's, as I said, it's going to be the fine dining on the right and a bar seating on, on the left. And you'll see that we also asked for a CV license tonight and a, an entertainment license. So there will be some TVs in the bar area. And you can see on that where the to-go area will be, right there. Where, with the menus that you can see, it's going to be traditional fine dining Italian restaurant with seasonal flair. Meaning that we expect that we'll be sourcing local things around this time of year. You'll be seeing some pumpkin raviolis, some chestnut raviolis, that type of thing. But then going into the spring and summer, seeing a, as I said, more local, more local flavors. We do anticipate that we're going to have a lot of salads and things like that during, during the summertime. And we also are in talks with a pastry chef to bring somebody in to do some traditional Italian pastries, cannolis, once a week, so that that will be, you know, that will be something that we'll be able to offer. The hours of operation, we do plan on having lunch. We're having, going through dinner. And then after nine o'clock at night, we're anticipating that we would have a bar bites menu or something that, along the lines of lighter fare. We want everybody who is in the place to be eating at, at all times. We, with respect to a closing hour, we're asking for a little bit later closing hour, mostly because of what we anticipate to be private parties. We would like to get, you know, if somebody wanted to have a shower or somebody had a birthday party or whatever. But we anticipate that our closing time will be consistent with the, the other restaurants in the area, normally around ten or eleven o'clock at night. We just want to have that option to, to do that. So the family is coming in. We have all of our homemade salad dressings and everything ready to go. Our construction, right now, we're, we have met with everybody. We, as you see, we have the floor plan, we have our general contractor. And we're anticipating that we would have an opening in March of next year. When we, we'd like to, like it to be a little bit sooner, but our contractor tells us that March is the realistic date as to when we're going to open. So Michael is here. He's ready to answer any questions that you might have with respect to the specifics of the operation. We're looking forward to coming into this area. We believe that this, it's, it's going to be just a wonderful combination for everybody involved.
I haven't used the word "super excited."
Thank you so much. Gus, do you want to start?
Yes, my first comment is I'm glad to see you're moving in. So I'm happy to see it and welcome.
Thank you.
I can't say I've been to Mother Anna's in Boston, but everything that people who have been around here have had to say has been very positive. So I think, and, and this looks great. And also make an observation, having on more than one occasion, had to drive all the way back from Franklin looking for a place to eat after nine o'clock and winding up eating at home with whatever leftovers we could find in the refrigerator. I'm actually quite happy to hear that you're going to have food available past nine o'clock. I don't know if that's actually where all the rest of the restaurants are at in this town, because I sure can have a hard time finding them after nine.
No, they're relatively early, but, you know, with the, you know, the bar bites that we're talking about, lighter fare.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody wants to come by and get something later and catch the end of a Hawk, the Bruins Celtics, whatever, or have you.
Absolutely.
I'd like to, you know, that's the type of business that I'm, I'm looking to get in.
So I, anyway, I'm happy to see you're coming and everything. I've seen, well, it sounds great. This looks great.
And we've had a request for arancini and then possibly some pizza. So we're really going to look into it. And that's what you would, that's what we expect that we will be able to have at all times. We want to, we want to be able to have food all times that we're open.
I mean, I don't want to waste fossils for somebody sitting there drinking by the wife's for two hours. It's not the direction that we want to go in at all.
Exactly.
The crowd in this town, I don't think necessarily does that anyway.
I'm handing that to fatten everyone up.
And, and I do want, I do want to say that we, that, that they are a holder of an all-alcohol license in the city of Boston. They've never had a disciplinary hearing. As it, as I said, it's really a fine dining restaurant in the city. So we, we come into, we believe, Medfield with a really good track record as well with the sale and service of alcohol. Just for the record, I just want to say Michael is a citizen. He's a resident of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as well. So he fits the bill from section twenty-six of what, what needs to be done.
Anything else, Gus?
Nope.
Eileen?
I have a question. I have an comment. I'm going to break the light.
Chief, can we hold off until we hear from the other select board members?
Sure.
Thank you.
So it's funny, when I saw this come up, Carolyn is an attorney, my younger brother's an attorney. He's like, hey, you're going to have a friend of mine come in, there's that new restaurant coming. I'm like, what do you think of it? He's like, it's fantastic. Because he's been the one on Hanover Street many a times. So I'm excited.
I appreciate that, yeah.
And we kind of chuckled because if, now I'm going to go back in all my years in Medfield, this building before it was Papagino's was actually an Italian restaurant. It was Signoris.
Really?
Yeah. And that's how it went from being a one, it was standalone restaurant, and then they broke down the wall. So when I look at what you're doing now, it's like, it's, it's awesome. And, you know, I wish you nothing but success. And I, I think you're, you're spot on with having the light bites. You will find people will want to watch the Celtics game, the Bruins game. And let's keep people in Medfield, because I think there's, and we certainly have some great restaurants here, but I don't think you're going to steal from that. I think there's a lot of, enough people float around. And we'll bring more people to Medfield versus sending them off to some other towns, so.
Yeah, well, that's what my goal is.
Thank you.
Advertising and all that on the outskirts to get them to come, come in.
Yeah, and there's a lot of sporting events and things like that that go on, all the soccer tournaments, lacrosse tournaments. So, and you've got great parking, so it's, it's a nice setup. So I wish you well.
Thank you very much.
So I, I don't really have any questions. I just, as I say, I really did see very glowing reviews of your other restaurants already. So that, I'm delighted that you, you decided to come to Medfield and that you're filling one of our empty spaces. And, and that's all for me. And now we'll hear from Chief Carrico. Thank you, chief.
No, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the, the property at eighteen North Meadows Road has a failing fire alarm system and a sprinkler system. I've had multiple discussions with the building inspector about the property, and I'm also talking with the management company that runs the building. And before, in occupancy would be approved, some of these issues, which are rather significant, have to be addressed.
So that's a legitimate question. So I'll go back to you guys. So I'm assuming your contractor would be working with the landlord to make sure that you're not putting your building at risk? Or your, all your hard work at risk?
No, no, not at all. I can't give you specifics what they were doing, but I had a meeting there with my G C and everyone else that was involved for other reasons. But they were in there. I don't know, I can't quote exactly what they were doing with the fire and fire, but I know they were changing heads, they were doing stuff to the fire prevention stuff, what do you call it?
Tomorrow morning, I will make sure that I get ahold of the landlord and we get all of, you know, that we get our, to our satisfaction that everything is going to be addressed.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Susan, who's the manage, management person for the property. She said that they're going to do, replace the fire alarm system and that they're going to submit drawings to the building inspector for the sprinkler system. And I would just make sure that, you know, moving forward, which, you know, fully support your operation. But, you know, that has to be addressed prior to opening.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Bits is a new issue, but first place my head go. So this is something that's affecting that entire building?
Yeah, the, the entire building has a fire alarm system, and then it has multiple sub panels in some of the occupancies. We've had fire alarm activations, and the activation would go off down at the Medfield TV, and then it would go off at the complete opposite end of the building. We've had sprinkler leaks throughout from the Chinese food restaurant towards Medfield Gardens. They've identified that the system at one time was a wet system, so it had water in it. The sprinkler system had water in it. And then because of the leaks and because of problems, they ended up converting it to a dry system. So what they do is they basically put a different valve, and they charge the whole system with air. So if the, if the smoke detector act, or the sprinkler head activates, it basically pops a little disc, and then the air floods out, and then water comes in behind it. And what's happening is that there's so much rust in some of those pipes that it's actually rusting through and leaking into the occupancies. So it has to be addressed before we move forward.
So where my head went first was the store at the left, all the way out the left, Code Ninja Store. Or, that's not a store, but the Code Ninja Office, which has kids coming in there the whole time. So it's one thing to be in a restaurant with adults. It's another thing to sit there and have, and I'm, only because you've just raised it. Is this something that needs to get fixed, but we don't need to be, we, you do, but we don't need to be worried that it doesn't get done and dealt with on a timely basis? Or is this something that's got to get fixed, but the landlord knows, and it's not, in your judgment, at this point in time, a problem that requires any further town action?
No, it, it, as far as the town of Medfield, we've made appropriate notifications that they need to fix it. And, and they've basically been given that direction. That if any additional occupancies move into the Plaza, that it has to be fixed.
Okay, which would be them?
Yes, correct.
And there's nothing that you, at this point in time, there's nothing you're getting back from the owners to indicate that you are concerned with their commitment to good faith effort to fix the problem?
It's just my fire chief, I want it done tomorrow. Good. So I'm, I'm consistently on top of them. I'm, I'm checking in every couple of weeks, saying, okay, what's our progress? What are we doing? It's just, it's one of those things that, you know, if, if, if the sprinkler system, say, should activate, it could fill with a bunch of debris, and then the sprinkler head might not activate.
Right.
So, you know, that's a big concern. I think one of the pipes that they opened up had one or two inches of debris at the bottom of the pipe because of all the rust and crud that's inside those, some of those pipes. So it, it, it needs to be fixed.
Well, I'm glad these guys are moving in, because they're going to keep them, I mean, you have experience.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I mean, we've got a hundred and nine seats. You don't want, we don't want to put anyone in danger, so.
You have our commitment to make sure that, as I said, tomorrow morning, that's the first thing I'm going to be doing.
So it doesn't look like you're, you're moving any walls or anything to any great extent. So hopefully your construction will go pretty quickly.
Yes, as I said, the, the, the construction is really the new kitchen and the bar area and the, and new ceilings, as I said, with the soundproofing and everything in, in there. But we'll, we'll be making sure that we're in compliance with everything.
Are you going to leave the plate glass window into the kitchen at the front?
We may cover it with like a curtain or something.
You might put up a curtain or something.
The landlord is not willing to let us take the glass out and put a wall in.
I'd watch to make it really nice out there. He doesn't want me to change it. Thirty-five years of my life, I've been cooking in kitchens, and I've never had an open one. So it's uneasy feelings about having it open. But we're, we're debating, my brother and I, what we want to do with it.
People pay extra for that chef's table, so. Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Oh goodness. And so now I guess our, our hearing is closed?
Declare it closed.
Say again?
Declare it closed.
I just declared it closed.
All right, so a motion?
And so we need a motion on the retail liquor license and the common viculers license.
And the entertainment license.
And the entertainment license. Thank you.
Okay, so I motion...
You can do them all together, Mark.
No.
No, no, no. One first, only one, that was the hearing. Yeah. Don't, don't combine them.
So liquor license first?
Just the liquor license first.
Do you have the manager too, as well as the license, because that's the information we need to go to you?
All right, so I will motion number one, motion to approve the retail liquor license request from Mother Anna's at eighteen North Meadows Road, Medfield.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, so then I motion to grant a common vicu, license and entertainment license to Mother Anna's Inc. at eighteen North Meadows Road, Medfield.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to go back and approve the manager? What was designated on the application?
Ooh, okay, let me go to my...
We don't have the manager.
Well, it's on here, but I have it on the, if I go to my...
Michael is the proposed manager.
Michael who?
Michael Caparella is the proposed manager.
So motion to approve the manager, Michael Caparella, for Mother Anna's at eighteen North Meadows Road, Medfield.
Minor correction, I believe it's Caparella?
Caparella, oh, excuse me.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to town. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. We look forward to it.
Thank you so much for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome again. Look forward to it.
Michael, thanks for bringing the menus. That's really nice. Appreciate it.
You make me really hungry right now.
Featured specials, that's what I always go to look for, Michael. Okay. Our next item.
Another public hearing?
You made some good time up there, Pete.
Public hearing at seven thirty.
Seven thirty. Oh, we can't start that one then? What is, yeah, we started so late. Okay. Public hearing, seven thirty, grant of location petition and plan are being presented by the N-Star Electric Company, D B A EverSource Energy for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one new stub pole, number one slash one oh nine, one oh eight S on North Street. This work is necessary to provide support to pole number one forward slash one oh eight. Existing tree guide to be removed. Is there somebody here from EverSource?
Oh, yep, hold on. Hello there.
Hi, this is Christine Cosby, EverSource.
Hi, Christine, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good, we can hear you.
Please go ahead.
Okay, yes, um, yes. We're requesting, I'm sorry, what?
We're ready to hear your application, your request for the pole. Can you just run down what you're doing?
Yes, I was requesting a grant of location to a stub pole located on North Street. And it would be pole one over one oh eight S. And the purpose of the new stub pole would be to provide support to the existing poles that's across the street, which is one over one oh eight. Currently, the pole has support provided to it from a tree guy that's located in a tree that, you know, in the same, on the same side of the street as the proposed stub pole would be. And they're looking to get that tree guy removed, the tree.
And is that everything?
Yes, that's it.
Did you have anything else for us, or is that it?
That's it. We're just looking for a grant of location for the new stub pole to be placed on that, that pole, one over one oh eight S, in order to provide support to that existing pole that's out there. There's a strain on that pole due to, due to it being on a corner, and there's several utilities on, on those poles on that side of the street. So it's causing a strain to that pole, which, you know, it does require support. So with the tree guy, we're looking to have the tree guy remove. So we're looking to put the stub pole and replace the tree guy.
Okay. Mr. Murby?
Yeah, I've got a couple of probably stupid questions to ask, because I don't necessarily know the terms. Is this, a stub pole then is simply a pole that's a supporting pole that's not actually carrying wires? Is that, I didn't know what a stub pole was.
Yes.
Okay.
A stub pole, it's, it's a pole that's a little bit smaller inside, and it will be on that same side of the street where the tree guy is, the tree that the dead tree is. And it only carries the, what they call a guy wire. It's just a cable that goes from the existing pole to the stub pole to provide that support. There's no, there's no electrical wires or service, there's no service wire. It's just a supporting cable, that's it.
Okay, but in the application, I think it said there'd be one cross arm to handle wires. And I think it said, I think it said phone, and I'm not sure what all that. So what is the cross arm that's there for? What, why is a cross arm there?
Yes. It actually, that, that language in the petitioning documents, that's just standard language. This, this pole will not have a cross arm on it.
Okay.
It's just going to be a single pole with a guy wire attached to it.
Got it. And then if I understand what I think you just said, right now, there's a tree somewhere in the vicinity of that new stub pole, which is what's, which is what is providing the support to the one oh eight pole on the other side of North Street? And I don't know whether it's the owners or whether it's, it's EverSource that's determined that that support should no longer be coming from that tree, which is why you need the pole? Do I get that? Okay. Then on the order for location of poles, it says that we, it's ordered that N-Star Electric Company, doing business with EverSource Energy, be and hereby is granted permission to erect or construct in a location for such a line of wires, poles, and such other fixtures, including anchors and a, and guy, as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line upon. If there's no, I'm probably just beating you up on specific words that are standard wording. So if that's what I'm doing, just tell me. But there are no wires on the pole, and it seems like the wording on that is open-ended in the sense that that pole can have anchors. And I, I'm not sure if the guy is the cable that goes to the pole across the street. So I understand, I'm asking, I'm probably asking stupid questions. It's just that when I read the materials, I can't tell from what the words say what it is that's really happening. It's not a criticism, it's just an observation.
That's, that's standard language in the document. But do you have a copy of the plan there?
I do.
With the paperwork?
I do, the map, the one that shows North Street and shows the location of the poles? Yes.
Yes, okay, so you see pole one over one oh eight in the black circle, that's the existing pole?
I do.
Okay, and there's a span of thirty-nine feet across the street?
Correct, to the one oh eight S, got it.
And then the one oh eight S, that's the new stub pole. That is all that's going in, is what is shown on the plan.
Yeah, I understand.
No anchor guy, no, no cross arms, just, that's just it. It's just a pole with the, with the guy wire, thirty-nine feet going across the street.
Is one oh seven S also a stub pole for one oh seven?
One oh seven S is a stub pole that's already there, that's supporting one oh seven, that's already there. That's all existing.
That's what I, okay, that's, I was just...
The only, yeah, the only thing that's proposed is what you see in the red, the red circle there.
Do I understand that? But what I'm trying to understand is the wording in the order for location, which calls out line, line of wi, we're, we're basically granting permission to erect or construct and providing a location for such a line of wires, poles, and such other fixtures, including anchors and guy. And I'm guessing the guy is the thing that goes across the street to one oh, not, one oh, not, yeah, one oh eight. So we're, we're authorizing a bunch of stuff that you're telling me isn't necessary for the pole?
No, no, what, what we're petitioning for is what we typed out. So what you are reading is standard language in, in the, in the petitioning documents, documents. But what we're specifically asking permission for is what was typed out. North Street, northwest east side, across three thousand feet. Northeast of Farm Street, install one new stub pole, one oh eight over there. That is what, that is what we're specifically asking for.
That helped me under, helped me understand why the paragraph above that has a bunch of other stuff.
Because that, that's just the, the standard language that's in all the petitioning documents that, you know, most utilities have, that's, that's just like the standard language that's there.
So why would we want, why would we want to accept, why would we want to accept that standard language if it authorizes a bunch of stuff that you're not asking for and that we might not? I, 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 I'm trying to understand, this is, this is a legal document we're signing, saying a bunch of things. And it sounds like what you want is authorization for a stub pole that I don't have any problems with at all. And it sounds like what you want is authorization for a stub pole that I don't have any problems with at all, except I don't understand why all the rest of the stuff is there. Because I'm guessing if at some point in the future EverSource wanted to start using it for other reasons, we wouldn't be able to say, no, you told us that's not what you were doing in the next line down.
Why can't we strike it out? Why can't we strike it out, Gus?
Well, that's, that's where I'm going.
I'm just cutting right to the choice. Like, we can remove that and not follow our asking for it.
Why don't we remove the stuff that you don't really need? Is there a reason, I'm not really, I know I'm giving you a hard time, but that's not really my intention. It's just that I don't tend to like to sign expansive authorizations on a request that's restrictive, unless I understand why it doesn't matter or why we might even want you to be able to do that at some point in the future.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand that it's a lot there, but like you said, that's just the standard language that's in the documents, but what specifically we're asking for is what we typed out.
Do you really object to strike?
So do you, so?
Or, or if you want...
So we can revise it?
...upon that we don't install, what, what, in the other language, or if you want, like you said, strike it out?
Sure.
Yeah, strike out what we don't think we, we need.
Gus, do you want to delineate what you're going to ask to strike out so that EverSource knows?
So what I, in that paragraph that's right above the description about North Street, Northwest Lee Side, says it is ordered that N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy be and hereby is granted permission to erect or construct in a location for, and I would just say, strike such a line of wires, poles, and, poles and such a...
Are you, can I just ask you, are you, are you talking about the form of the petition?
I'm talking about a document I'm looking at, it's an order for location of poles. And it's the one I think you want us to sign.
Okay, okay, great. I just want to make sure I looked at the right one. So what particular looking to strike?
So second paragraph, so it's the document, the heading is order for location of poles. Second paragraph. Second paragraph.
Yeah?
It is ordered that N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy be and hereby is granted permission to erect or construct in a location for, strike such a line of wires, leave poles and such other fixtures, including anchors and guy, as may be necessary to sustain or protect the pole, I guess the pole.
It's not wires, right.
So, so instead of strike the second time, wires of the line upon, replace it with pole along and across the following public way or ways of said North Street. And then continues on from there. And the order is to install one new stub pole.
Okay, yeah, so we're going to strike such a line of wires.
Yeah.
And then...
And then right below it. Wires of the line upon.
Yeah?
And replace wires of the line upon with pole.
Does that work for you?
It is ordered that N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy be and hereby is granted permission to erect, construct, and the location for poles and such other fixtures, including anchors and guy, as may be necessary to sustain or protect the pole. The wires of pole or the pole?
Pole.
The pole. So you're going to strike wires of the line upon on that, on that third line.
Okay, alright.
It's okay?
So to sustain or protect pole, to sustain or protect the pole along and across the following public way or ways of said town.
Yep. That sounded reasonable to me, if it sounds reasonable to you.
It's fine by me. Is it okay with you, EverSource?
Yeah, what I'll do is, I'll have this form revised. I'll have this lined out. And then I'll just set it along and if it's approved, the way it's approved, it could be approved conditioned upon that this is what we do. And then I will make sure that this gets revised to strike that information and get that over to you with signature.
I'm fine with doing it that way. So we getting the answer tonight, that's fine. Yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Gus?
Nope.
Eileen?
Nope, I understand what you were just asking, and it makes a lot of sense.
I'm fine with the change as well. Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you. My name's Dan Robel. My wife and I, Donna Cameron, are owners of three-three-eight North Street in Medfield. The property is held in trust by Ted Cannon, who you probably all know. And first of all, could you just have Christine spell her last name and what her position is at EverSource? I just couldn't understand it.
Not that, Christine.
My last name is Cosby. It's C-O-S-B-Y, Cosby.
C-O-S-C-Y. And what's your position, please?
I'm a right-of-way agent.
Right-of-way agent, thank you. So, this, I don't mean to take up your time, but...
No, that's fine, please.
I've already done that, so you're fine. The saga began three years ago, actually. And on our property in the front yard is a tree which was about seventy feet tall. And the tree died in the summer of 2020. And I immediately contacted EverSource. And I don't have the name of the lady with me, but she was very, very helpful. And EverSource came very quickly and topped the tree down to about thirty feet. And the reason they couldn't go further is because there's a guide wire running from pole thirty-eight to our tree. That pole, that, we bought our property in nineteen ninety-six. That guide wire was there when we bought it. There is no legal easement or any other rights that EverSource or Verizon had with respect to that guide wire. They just put it up and a previous owner must have just given them verbal permission. So what I've been worried about for three years is that remainder of the tree falling, because it is a dead tree. And the wire falling across North Street and creating a terrible accident. So after, in August of 2020, EverSource called me back and they said Verizon was responsible for the guide wire. So for the last three years, I have been trying to get Verizon to do something. And they did not, I had many, many conversations, many exchanges. And finally, we hired Ted Cannon's law firm because this was just not being taken care of. And we've spent nearly four thousand dollars to resolve this issue. And now, we have finally been told again, as I think you've heard tonight, that EverSource is responsible for the guide wire. We fully support the stub pole and we want it done as soon as possible. But we would really appreciate it very much. Once the guide wire is taken down, at least if EverSource would take down the remainder of our tree, so we don't have to incur several more thousand dollars of payment. I know that's not your issue, but I'm bringing it up tonight because at least I want you to hear about it. And we hope that EverSource is responsible and responsive as it was three years ago. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
EverSource, did you hear all of that? I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Carol.
Carol.
Christine.
Christine.
Christine, Christine?
Yes, I, I, I heard everything. And I will follow up to make, to find out, you know, and inquire as to whether or not we will take down that tree.
Alright.
Thank you. Christine, thank you very much. I really appreciate your consideration.
And can you report back to us at the town to let us know what EverSource's position is on that guy wire that, and that tree issue, please?
Yes, I believe what will happen is, once the stub pole is installed, we will attach a guy wire. We don't have a guy wire in that tree. Verizon does. But Verizon, I don't think will remove that guy wire out of the tree. Because like you said, it's a concern about the tree falling down, or the pole, there's a pole falling down. So I think once the guy, the guy stub pole is installed and we set, install a guy wire through that new stub pole, Verizon will do the same. And they'll be able to get that guy wire on the tree, attached to the stub pole as we will. And then the tree can be removed.
That's all correct. That's what we've been told within the last couple of weeks.
I should have asked who you were to start with, because I looked at, the properties were all identified as real estate trusts that have it. So it's like, well, I don't even know if there's real owners to ask if you want this done, so I'm glad you commented.
Can I make a quick comment? We in the stub pole said no wires, no nothing. And I'm hearing this conversation and I'm thinking there's, you want...
Yeah, but, no, we allowed the guy.
I didn't explain that.
Okay.
It's a guy wire, not a service wire.
The guy?
So just as...
A guy wire is the wire, is a cable.
Can you please identify yourself, please?
I'm Christian Donner, ninety-two Green Street. I'm just intrigued by the conversation. Because I have one in my yard as well, one of those subpoles. A guy wire is a wire, is a cable that runs from the top of the pole to the ground to create the tension that the cable that runs across the street doesn't sag, so actually your poles.
So to, it's not a wire, it's a cable.
Okay, cable wire, it's a suspension wire.
It's there to hold the other pole up, so.
It's a steel, it's a steel guy. Gee, you, it's not a misstatement of the document, it's actually not spelled that.
But essentially, the pole that you're talking about, that's attached to the tree, is not on this plan that we have here. At least not by that number, because you said thirty-eight, didn't you?
Well, it's not a pole. One interesting thing that's happened, as a result of the efforts that my wife and I and Ted Cannon have made, it was discovered by EverSource that the existing pole was too weak to continue to support all of the wires and other things that go on a pole, of which I know nothing about other than being observer. So they have replaced the existing pole thirty-eight. I don't know if they put a new number on it or what. But they replaced it about three weeks ago because it had to be replaced. But I don't think they would have known that if we hadn't been so vigorous in our attempts to get the stub pole put in.
Is your pole thirty-eight that you're talking about on your side of North Street or the other side?
It's on the opposite side of North Street.
Yeah, that's where all the wires are from the, yeah.
That's where all the wires are. And then there are obviously wires running across North Street to our, I mean, electrical wires and any other kind of wires as well. But this guide wire is just a very specific wire that's near the top of what was pole thirty-eight, running to a height of about twenty-five feet or so in this dead tree.
Kristen, did you want to tell us about pole thirty-eight?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's actually, it's not pole thirty-eight, it's pole one, one oh eight.
Oh.
Are you on the side, are you on the side of the street, December three thirty-one?
No, we're across the street at three thirty-eight.
Okay.
It's our, Kristen, it's our tree to which the guide wire runs, across North Street.
Okay, so, what was your question again? I'm sorry. That, that pole one zero eight, which is on the opposite side of the street, which is three thirty, that's the pole that needs the support. That has been replaced.
Yes.
The new pole has been set, and we're waiting for the other utilities to transfer to it so that we can take the old pole out. That pole's on the side of the street of three thirty-nine, three thirty-one.
That's right.
And that's the pole that needs the support. So if we install the stub pole across the street located between three thirty, every thirty-eight, that guy wire, which should be a cable, this will run from the top of the pole, the existing pole one oh eight, across the street to the new stub pole. It's almost like the stub pole takes place of the, it replaces what the tree's doing.
Yep.
This is what you want. That is correct, and that's what we want.
Okay.
Which we greatly appreciate.
Any more questions or comments? Christine, thank you for all of your input on this. Do we have a motion on this now?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
We, yes, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a motion now?
So we motioned to grant the location of petition and plan as modified during the discussion by the N-Star Electric Company Doing Business as EverSource Energy for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one new subpole, number one slash one oh eight S on North Street. This work is necessary to provide support to pole number one, one oh eight existing tree guy to be removed.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much.
Next, the select board is going to recognize the following individuals for their dedication to the town of Medfield. Alicia Walsh, police, five years of work anniversary on October fifteen. And Nicholas and Dexler Fire, five-year work anniversary on October twenty-two.
Alright.
And those people are here, I hope.
Alicia actually does a family event that she was leaving for this evening, so she couldn't make it.
Okay.
Do you want to take her commendation?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Weddings and family events, we're going to stand up all over the place. Thank God for weddings and family events. Thank you so much for your commitment to the town and five years of service. There you are.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Do a group shot, or?
Yeah, Brittany's going to take your picture.
Yes.
You can stand behind with them, he'll be...
Alright, you can have him come in here.
There we go.
We need a new table.
I know, we need a new table. There we go, jump in here.
Perfect, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and listening to our...
Thank you.
Discussion about...
There are more about poles tonight?
It was a pole education night.
Yeah.
Our next appointment is with Christian Donner on behalf of Isabel Marsette to discuss options for assigned location on the rail trail. Welcome, Christian. Thank you for your pole comments.
Thank you.
Thanks for your maps, too. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
We have Isabel Marsette and... Am I good to go?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Christian Donner, ninety-two Green Street, friends of the Medfield Rail Trail. I will take a minute to remind you of the, where we left this conversation. The last time I was here in this matter was, I began, in August, I believe, someone, beginning of August. And we talked about the location for a senior, Medfield Senior, Medfield High School Senior Art Project. It's a painting that we would like to install on the rail trail from Isabel. And the locations in the original proposal was questioned by the board because it was close to Wetlands and it was well off of Colonial Road, well away from any trailheads. And so we went back and redrew the proposal that you believe I've, you've seen, the new plan. There are two options. The friends of the Medfield Rail Trail, Mike and Paula and I have discussed the options and decided that we would recommend option A, which is on the left side, Ice House Road going in. It's well away from Wetlands, it's well away from any other potential obstacles. And I believe it meets all their concerns or meets all the requirements that we discussed that you would like to see. And we hope that this can be approved tonight.
Thank you so much. Gus, questions, comments?
First comment is, I really like the, I really like the picture, the illustration. It's got the right, as far as I'm concerned, it has the right tone. You know, for an outdoor trail that people are going to go to and have a good time, quite aside from just the art, just the straight art. The tone that you chose is great. I really love that. I had two questions. Couldn't find a possum and I couldn't find a skunk in there. You got most of the others, except, and then I was wondering, is it a beaver or an otter in the water? It's a beaver, okay. I figured that would be the case, but, no, I think it's great. And I think the location looks like it's one that's easy for people to see from the road, which I would think we would want, so, thank you very much for doing it.
Eileen?
I'm going to echo those same sentiments. I love it. I think it's so charming. And position A is such a great way when you start the walk. It's just, it's just so inviting, it's cherry, it reinforces its Medfield Rail Trail, right? I mean, and it kind of gives you a vision of, as you go along, these are some of the things you may see. Because you start off on dry land, right? But as you go across, that's when you start to see, you know, the water life. And so I just think it's, you know, Isabel, you've done a fabulous job. And I know you're going to do all these things to make sure that Mother Nature doesn't destroy it with the snow and the rain and whatever. But I just say kudos. I think you put a lot of thought into it. And I think you really listened to us where we had to be careful where we put it because of, you know, Christian, some of the things we've run into, right? So now we know we're in a spot that it's legit. And what a great entrance to, to starting off the walk, so.
Okay, I like the painting, too. Okay, um, I, I like the painting too, so thank you for doing it. Thank you for offering it to the town. I guess you're basically giving it to the town if you put it up on our property. I think that's what the attorneys tell me. And so, um, I think, I think that we're all in agreement and all set, so thank you for thinking of our town and doing this for us.
Thank you. Motion?
Yes, please.
All right, so motion to approve, um, on Isabel Marsette's signed location for the rail trail.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
So when will it go up?
Uh, well, we have, I think she's put in about eighty hours into it so far this summer. Artists are perfectionists, so I, I live with this. Soon, maybe a few more hours, and then we have to varnish it so that it is protected. We're still kind of learning about what.
So is that how you get it to, to, to stay outside, is to varnish it?
We hope. Yes.
Let us know, it's going to be exciting when it goes up.
Yeah, and then Dad will dig the holes and we'll put the posts in, and, um, we'll let you know when it's.
So Bonnie, while you're here, share with us how many years you've worked for the town of Medfield?
Um, I, it's only been six. I moved around after I had this one, so, but I've been in education for twenty years, so. Um, yes, and, and on a couple of boards in Medfield, so now that Jeremy.
I know your husband has as well.
Yes, thank you so much, and thank you so much, Mr. Donner, for all of your support and for the rail trail, the Friends of the Medfield as well.
Thank you for, thank you for the, for this great asset.
Absolutely.
And I do have a post hole digger, an R with an R, that I, that Jeremy can rent.
We can meet up then.
We can meet up.
I just heard him volunteer.
I was gonna say, I think you just got your volunteer.
So many posts, uh, you know, on that rail trail, two more is Jonah picture.
Hopefully before November first.
Yeah, before it gets too solid, yeah, get in there, right?
I won't be, I won't, I'll be away next week unfortunately, so we'll have to be.
She'll finish painting, drive, and then we'll.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Isabel. Chief Carrico, Medfield Fire Department, to give quarterly update. Thank you, chief.
Hi, good evening. Uh, to start out, um, I was notified today that the assistance to firefighter grant and the SAFRA grant were unsuccessful.
Oh.
That, uh, we made it through peer review, we made it through technical review, but, uh, the federal government ran out of funds before they got to our grants.
Oh.
So I should be getting the official turn down notice. Um, I was notified by the, uh, FEMA district rep that once I get the turn down notice, I can give him a call and he will explain to me, um, where our shortcomings were, if any. And we can proceed next year with those same grants, as long as I get the approval of the board.
And the SAFRA grant is for the personnel to get us up to that level of staffing that you think we should have?
Correct, yeah.
And is, is that for one year that they give us the money, or?
Uh, right now it was for, uh, fully funded for three years.
Three years, excellent.
And then at the fourth year, you can do as you will. You keep them or continue.
So, so do we, we've, we already got the grant once, or is this?
We've gotten SAFRA grant, uh, correction, we've gotten assistance to firefighter grants in the past. That is for equipment, uh, such as SCBA, that was for the, all the COVID supplies.
I must be, I must be confusing those two, because I thought we had gotten grants, but I was thinking it was SAFRA grant, but.
No, it was the assistance to firefighter grant.
Okay, so we, in other words, if this thing doesn't grant, we don't have those people on board yet that we would then have to figure out.
No, no, that's all part of the process. Uh, when, you know, once you're awarded, you have six months to do the hiring.
Yeah.
And then, uh, you know, then it basically kicks off from there, and you have, like I said, it, it covers all the, uh, the rate, the costs, like, um, just salaries and behind the scene costs, all your overhead costs would be covered. But overtime, clothing, equipment, all that stuff is extra.
Is, chief, is it difficult to find people to serve on the fire departments now?
Right now there's a shortage of paramedics in the fire service. And there are so many job opportunities, uh, people are job shopping. So basically, they apply to a place, they get the union's contract, uh, then they go from there. And people are leaving for one dollar an hour raises and jumping departments left and right. Uh, there are some departments that have openings for up to two years because they can't find people.
Have, have you been experiencing that sort of turnover?
Um, luckily, the, the fire department has had a status quo and we've been maintaining our twelve. Um, there's always going to be a little bit of transition, and you can always applaud somebody that's, uh, promotioning out to another department or.
Sure.
Or, or, you know, or somebody who's retiring, you know, obviously that those type of things happen. Um, but, you know, for right now, uh, you know, I've, I've kind of put some feelers out. I try to get the, uh, you know, assess the attitude on the floor. And for the most part, people aren't leaving and they're happy here and they want to continue, you know, they're, they want to ride up their, their career here, so.
So I think that's kudos to you, so, thank you.
I, I just look at it as, uh, providing people with opportunities and treating them fair and, um, just trying to, uh, create a positive atmosphere.
Yep, good. It's working.
Well, some days. For my stats from July one to October fifteenth, um, it was funny, it was on October sixteenth, we went kind of crazy and we had seven runs and we were all over the place, but I didn't account for those runs in these stats. So, so far for this fiscal year, four hundred and twenty-five incidents, uh, fourteen second medicals, one-third medical. EMS is sixty-one point one-four percent of our total volume right now. Uh, non-EMS calls is thirty-eight point eight-six percent. Uh, hundred and sixty-eight ALS calls, which generated a hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Fifty-five BLS calls, which generated twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, we've provided, uh, rece, correction, we have received mutual aid twelve times, and we have given mutual aid twenty-one times. So if you remember back in the day, we were receiving eighty-six, ninety mutual aid, uh, communities coming into Medfield. And now we are providing mutual aid more than we're getting it.
So recall, that was a point you made when we were looking at ALS.
Yes, yep. And, uh, right now it's, uh, you know, Milis and Dover, uh, we seem to be exchanging mil, uh, mutual aid with them consistently. Some things going on in Milis, um, we've been going over there quite a bit. I want to say the last weekend, we went over there four times in one weekend, so. Um, whether or not their call volume is going up, I, I really don't keep stats on what's happening around me, uh, other than I just listen and try to make mental notes. But, um, yeah, which is a good thing. We're providing mutual aid more than we're getting it, so. And it, it's predominantly with the ambulance, um, so that, that's, you know, that's, that's what you want, because that's revenue. Uh, box alarms, we've had forty-one box alarms. Uh, the response rate for full-time firefighters is two percent. The average response rate for call firefighters is twenty-four point seven percent. Uh, I've had three fire, three call firefighters with fifty-eight percent or more. Five call members with a response rate of fourteen point six to thirty-six point six. Two call members, uh, four point nine, uh, fourteen point six. And I've had three call members that haven't called, come back at all. Uh, one is injured, uh, one, I think he's probably at the end of his, uh, career. And I, I think he's not going to be coming back, and, and for the third member there that hasn't come back at all, I have to have a discussion with him to see what his, his thoughts are.
Is there a correlation on distance from Medfield, there where they live, or?
Well, yeah, I, my rule of thumb is try to keep people within five miles of the station, and, uh, because I think that's a decent response rate. Uh, it's difficult in finding people. Um, there are, you know, and, and ultimately, I've had some people that have expressed interest, but they have no interest in EMS. And if you have sixty-one point four, one-four percent of your call volume is EMS, then I need people that, that are interested in EMS. So do we, you know, do we take a step back and redo the thinking and try to hire firefighter, or EMT paramedics only? But, um, you know, I've, I've had that discussion with some other people that, you know, you put a box alarm on for an EMS call and you get people back who are only EMS trained, and then a fire comes in, so now you have all those people, now you call even more people back. And having that cross-trained individual is, is kind of like in the military, as Gus would know, it's, uh, you know, people who have cross-trained MOSs are more valuable in the big picture when things happen, so. And MOS is a job in, in the army, that was called MOS. Um, and I, I try to give you a kind of an interesting little thing that I've discovered, uh, looking at stats, and this, this one has kind of even surprised me. So I looked at the call breakdown by day of the week. So how many calls on Sunday, how many calls on Monday, and they were within, um, about twelve calls. So Sunday was sixty-three calls, Monday was sixty-four, Tuesday was fifty-nine, Wednesday was fifty-three, Thursday sixty-five, Friday sixty-one, and Saturday was sixty. So basically, in that last, you know, July one to October fifteenth, that was the breakdown on how the calls came in, according to the computer system. It's just kind of odd, because usually you have one day that everything spikes, so I thought that was kind of interesting how it was fairly well balanced, which I've, I've kind of never seen in my career, because usually, you know, you'll have, uh, like Monday and it will be just this huge spike, and then, you know, it'll be kind of quiet in a couple of other days, but it was kind of interesting, but that's all I have for you.
Gus, questions, comments?
I appreciate the job you're doing, chief. This, this is, it's good to hear this.
All right, thank you.
That's it. Eileen?
I do just have one question. When you were talking about, um, the ambulance support for like, for Milis or for Dover.
Yep.
So is there a situation where, like, so silly question, do they have their own ambulance?
Milis does have, they have two ambulances. Um, they were supplying two ALS ambulances. Now it looks like they're only doing one, and then they're staffing an engine, which is responding on the other calls. Uh, so I'm not really sure what the chief's thinking, or his, what his thought process is over there. He could be more worried about, uh, fire staffing and wanting to make sure he always has an engine rather than committing another truck. He may be having problems with callback, where he's getting people back on fire calls, but not getting them back on EMS calls, so he's trying to like, hold back. Um, I, I don't know what his thinking is.
So when you, so in that scenario, when we, and we have two ambulances staffed.
Well, we have one ambulance staffed, and then the second ambulance, we have to call back from the call force and the full-time force and see who we get back to staff that other ambulance.
Okay, and so one goes off to Milis. Are we ever, um, just, we just are all ambulances, are ones might be over in Dover, ones over in Milis?
Yep, we've had, we've had situations, it just happened, uh, yesterday, where we had, uh, A-one went out on a call. Uh, then a second, they went to the hospital, they transported to Boston, then another call came in, and the shift commander that was just here, uh, Jeff, Captain Bonati, uh, jumped in the ambulance with one of the call firefighter EMTs. He went on the call, and it became another transport to the same hospital in Boston.
Oh, wow.
And then what happens in that, uh, when we have no ambulance, then we have to go mutual aid. So if another call comes in, then we call mutual aid. And that's the same for any other department that has multiple ambulances. Uh, when I was down in Sandwich, I had four ALS ambulances, and routinely I would have six medical calls going on and trucks coming in and out of town. It's just the nature of the beast, and that's why we rely on mutual aid, is to cover each other.
Sure, sure.
It's nice for us to be able to finally supply that mutual aid, because there was a significant period of years, you know, twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, where we were not able to provide that mutual aid to anybody, and we were relying a lot on our partner, partner towns, and it was, uh, it's nice to be able to pay that back a little bit.
Yeah, we, we become a burden, and, and it's funny is that, you know, in the past, we've even, we've even gone as far out as, you know, Norwood's called us for a mutual aid ambulance, which never really happened in the past. We're also on the run card for Westwood, so we supply an ALS ambulance to Westwood during their working fires.
And are we supporting Gillette at all? Do we bring, uh, ambulance over there for any events?
No, we've, uh, supported Xfinity Center.
Okay.
So, uh, what happens is, is, um, the firefighters are paid their hourly rate by Mansfield Fire. We supply the ambulance and we collect the revenue.
That's right, okay, we did that agreement a couple of months back, yep, okay, all right.
And it's actually, you know, a couple of the nights, uh, depending, uh, Snoop Dogg, uh, we did four transports while he was at his concert, so. You know, it, on average, we're doing anywhere between two to four runs every time we do those events. There, it's over for this year. Uh, you know, so far, every, all the feedback that I got was it was very successful, uh, fire-based delivery of that service, um, went really well, and they want us to come back next year. Um, I, I'm just interested to get the final numbers from ComStar to see how much money we generated. So basically, you know, technically, there was no overhead except for supplies and fuel. A little bit of wear and tear on the ambulance, because obviously you're transporting some, some different hospitals. And it would, it became a little bit problematic because it's to some hospitals that we never go to.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so there was a hospital down there in, uh, North Attleboro or Attleboro, and, you know, we went to Morton a couple of times, and so it's, uh, but it was a good experience, and they, they have a very good organization down there, and it's set up, you know, a huge, uh, ICS system, uh, for those events. And it's all tearing, depending on who the performer is, so, you know, obviously Snoop Dogg brought in a different layer of coverage. And you'd be surprised, even the country and western performers, because of just the volume of people, and it, sometimes those can get, you know, people can get a little crazy at those, too.
Well, and you, you brought up something tonight that I found to be super helpful, not something that we would have been privy to, but here we have a new per, uh, vendor coming into town, and they're about to go into establishment, that you know there could be some, that, that, there is a known risk with right now, and that.
Yep.
Are there any other buildings in town that, that you have concerns with, that, that you want to make sure that we're at least in tune with, that if people are coming forward?
Well, you know, for the buildings, we, we try to do annual inspections, and we have, uh, you know, the great program between, uh, the building inspector and, and my fire prevention officer, they go out and do these inspections annually. It's not just liquor license or the common vics, it's, it's an annual, uh, inspection into the common area. So if you have a multi-family unit that has a common entrance, then we have to inspect that.
Sure.
For right now, it's, if an occupancy is coming into a, a facility or a building, and I know that there's a known issue going on, then I'm going to make sure that we try to address that prior to that occupancy getting accepted. And I've worked with a lot of the business owners, uh, to try to make corrections, and, and my philosophy has always been crawl, walk, run. You know, in the first couple of years, we're going to crawl and, and we're going to, you know, treat it, you know, they may not understand, uh, some people see the, see the hazard and they don't understand it, because they've seen it every day, and they just, it just become oblivious to it. So it's, uh, basically an educational process, and, and try to not hit everybody with a hammer and, and, you know, and drop fines and all this other stuff. We try to be, um, you know, sympathetic and work with them and have empathy and, uh, but in the same respect, I, I need it to get done, because I need it to be safe. So, um, you know, as issues come up, uh, people are applying for occupancy, then I'm going to say, okay, hey, we need to do this.
Okay, no, that's awesome. I, I, when you did that tonight, I was like that. I could tell, uh, the attorney was like, okay, this is good to know, and if it wasn't brought to our attention now, it has been brought to our attention, and she can make sure that, uh, she can poke from her side.
Yeah, I, I wanted to make sure it was clear and on the record that, that there was, there's a known issue going on down there, and it needs to be addressed. And it, it's basically, it was a self-inflicted wound, too, because if you have a wet sprinkler system and then you convert it to a dry sprinkler system, inherently it becomes a rusting issue. And, you know, with the, with the leaks that they've had, and then it floods with water, and then it doesn't get cleaned out properly, and that water sits and it rusts. And, you know, because usually we'll get, uh, we'll get a call that, uh, that there's a leak in the ceiling, and then the fire, and then the sprinkler system will activate. So what happens is it trips, the water flow activates, and that's what notifies.
Well, no, and as Gus said, no, thank you so much. You're, you're, I love seeing your guys at the different events. I saw them at Medfield Day, and, uh, I think I even saw a couple of them at this past weekend at the spooky event with the scarecrows and all, so.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for all your support.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
So, uh, could I just start by asking you to email us those statistics that you, you?
I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Thank you so much. I just love statistics, so that'll be great to see those. And, and my other, only other question was whether the income from the, um, from, from the services that we're providing to the other towns now, uh, that you've told us about. I know that when, when we were going to the paramedic service, that was kind of factored into the cost of hiring the, the additional personnel. Is it working out pretty much the way you thought it was going to?
Oh, absolutely. I, the, the revenue that's being generated has far exceeded what the stated value was. So I think originally it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, I think that seven hundred thousand for the, for the fiscal year is, uh, very achievable, if not even more. It's also a function of the collections that we have, you have to understand that. If we have a collection agency that's weak, uh, then some of that revenue will be missed. It comes down to documentation of the EPCR and making sure that we collect all the person's correct information. Or if you're transporting somebody who doesn't have insurance, and so there's a lot of different things that we look at.
If the person doesn't have insurance, oh, well, then they get, don't they get Medicaid or something?
Well, you'd be surprised, there's some people out there that, uh, aren't as fortunate as others, and, uh, they get transported. Um, my whole, you know, ultimately, uh, my whole career in the fire service, I've always told people, I, I don't care how, if you pay, I just want to make sure you're better. I want to make sure you're well and you get the services you need. Um, so that's kind of after the fact, you know, I can be aggressive and, and chasing money after the fact, but, um, you know, let's get them into where they need to be, let's get them treated and.
What percent do you think we, we, you run into that don't have any, uh, insurance or ability to pay at all?
It's small, it's probably three percent. It's not very big. Uh, I was a little concerned with some of the people that were from the Xfinity detail. You know, some people that don't live in Massachusetts, uh, or some people that just don't want to pay the bill, or don't want to provide the right information. You know, you get people that give false names.
Oh.
Um, there's, there's a, it's a wide variety of things out there, and, you know, that's all tracked. Um, and we have write-offs that we do, um, through ComStar, so they'll send me a list of people and how much they've, uh, how much the bill was. It'll, it'll say something to the effect of, uh, no response from, from patient or patient address not found, or something, depending on if they gave us some false information.
So chief, the way that you worded that, uh, it's important to have a, a good collection agency. It sounds like you, you are happy with the one that you have now.
Yeah, but, you know, there's, there's always room for improvement. Um, are there better agencies than the one we have? I, you know, I, I think there might be. Um, I've tried to explore those avenues in the past. Um, we had put the, um, ambulance billing service out to bid a couple of years ago, and I want to say we're getting close, we'll probably have to do it again. We ended up saving a half a percent by putting it out to bid because at that period in time, it was, people were getting aggressive and there's one, there was one company out of Cambridge, Pro EMS. And they were offering, offering, you know, all brand new tablets and, you know, they were throwing a whole bunch of stuff at us as this little extra. But we ended up, for simplicity sake, because we were just coming into COVID at the time and we just stick with the company that we have. And they cut it by a half a percent. So we went from four and a half to, to four. You know, that's a thing that we could always do. If, if, I know Christine knows me and I'm always out there trying to work it and save a buck and, and try to get the best price that I can. So I think we'll explore that in the, in the fall or this, sometime next month, really. I think the fall is already here, Jesus.
I'm, I'm always impressed at the number of grants you seem to find and come up with. So thanks for those too.
You cannot imagine how disappointed I am that the last two grants were failures in my eyes. But I want to work on trying to be better next time.
Thanks so much for coming. Anything else? Anybody? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So our next appointment is with Chief Garette, Medfield Police Department to give a quarterly update. Thank you for coming, Chief. It's the night of the chiefs.
I love how excited Chief Carrico gets when he talks about fire service. He's not typically this animated at the station. Yeah, but sometimes there are bad words in that type of animation. I'll start with our quarterly update for you. I'm going to be woefully light on statistics, Pete, so, sorry.
Feel free to send them along whenever they are available.
What I did want to really talk to you guys about were some changes that we're making from within our organization. Some opportunities that we're giving our guys and just guys and girls and really reaping the benefits of those changes. So, I will give a few statistics just to make you happy. Our traffic enforcement continues to be at levels unseen from the previous years. This last quarter, we conducted 300, I'm sorry, 232 traffic enforcement posts where we actually set a vehicle up to target an area for speeding or other moving violations. And we conducted 310 motor vehicle stops during that time. So the guys are certainly out there being active. That's it, only stat I have. But we did start a couple of new programs and I wanted to talk to you about that. This past year, we purchased a drone. We have Officer McKenna tending the classes to get his FAA license. That is a requirement for law enforcement in the state of Massachusetts in order to operate a drone. They want to make sure that, you know, that our officers are well-trained in privacy laws. It is paramount to us. We certainly recognize that it's a very powerful tool to be able to float over and take images. The drone really for us is not for any law enforcement purpose. I think their laws are still kind of working their way through the courts and I think it's prudent for us to wait and see how some of those court decisions come out. We really wanted to get the drone for search and rescue and for community events. So if we're having a traffic issue, can we get some overhead footage on it to see where our traffic patterns are and for search and rescue with anyone missing? We've had a few incidents in Rocky Woods and over by Hinkley Pond where we've had to do extensive searches. We've had the benefit of having drones at nearby agencies, but, you know, in 15 minutes, 10 or 15 minutes, that person could have traveled a mile. So really time is of the essence and being able to get the drone up and functioning just seemed like a, a good tool for us. The other big change we made was Shelley Mangolinello has relinquished her position as a detective within our agency and returned back to the schools. So she is operating as the SRO this year in good conscience. Just, I couldn't leave the position vacant again for a second year. So we are just making do on our patrol side. As you all know and have heard, she does an excellent job over there and I think the schools are very happy to have her back. What that did was that opened up some investigative positions for us and what we thought was, let's see if we can't give some opportunities to our newer people. Recruitment and retention are very difficult in our profession. You've heard the fire chief speak about it as well. So I felt like we needed to show our members that we're invested in them and that we recognize they need career growth and advancement and opportunities. So this past month or two, we have expanded some opportunities to Officer Moses, who was appointed back in July. Officer McKenna, who's been with us for about a year, and Officer Plant, who's been with us for about a year. We reaped the rewards almost instantaneously from giving these opportunities. So just to give you a couple of cases that we've had that they've worked on. Officer Moses was able to positively ID a suspect on a stolen wallet case out of Cumberland Farms. The wallet then had a credit card fraud used over at CVS. Through his investigation and some of his other contacts, we were able to identify a suspect and subsequently charge them with that fraud. Officer McKenna and Moses wrote and executed search warrants on a B and E during the nighttime that we had, so breaking and entering. It was to a business. We had some laptops that were stolen. In the execution of the search warrants, after identifying subjects, we were able to recover some of the stolen property and continue to charge as that. We've issued preservation orders and administrative subpoenas to target a cell number that was related to harmful material texted to a minor. I'm not going to go into the nature of the material, but suffice it to say, if it's harmful in a minor, that investigation is continuing. And Officer Plant and Officer Moses are working on a series of car breaks. I'm not going to discuss the specific evidence, but they have been able to obtain some evidence and we are hopeful on solvability for that case as well. I would, as long as I know I have a forum and people are watching, we are getting hit with car breaks as are some of our neighboring towns. These are not people smashing windows. These are cars that are left unattended. I certainly don't want to blame the victim in this case, but the act of locking your door is really the one thing that is making the difference from the thefts. So, most of these thefts are taking place at night and I would encourage any residents that might be out awake. If you see someone in your neighborhood, please don't hesitate to give us a call. We'd much rather swing through and prevent a series of criminal acts than not know and find out in the morning. All right, let's see, drones. So that's pretty much where I've wanted to go with this quarterly update. Just kind of let you know that we've given some new opportunities and we're seeing some rewards and I think some satisfied employees as a result. The next thing will be our civil service and hiring. I'm not going to lie, it's been a tough go. We had only one resident in town who dropped out during the process. We had no disabled veterans and no veterans apply. So we are in the non-resident list. What we are getting with the non-resident list are people who are coming to us because we have a vacancy, not necessarily because this is the Department of Choice. We actually had an individual indicate in his interview that we were not his Department of Choice and he was only interviewing with us because we had to get to him on our list. That's very discouraging as a police executive. Just conducting a background investigation is costly and then sending somebody to training by the time we're done is running us about $65,000. So to try and swallow making that investment, knowing that an employee is likely to leave when the first opportunity presents itself. That aside, I do have some good news. I'm going to request of the board tonight to do provisional appointment or conditional appointment for student police officers for two individuals. The first individual is going to be Ingrid Senna. Ms. Senna does live in Medfield, although she did not meet the residency requirement by civil service. She wasn't here long enough. Just a few facts about her. She is currently a patient care coordinator in, for Advocates Incorporated in Framingham. She has certificates in phlebotomy, administering Narcan nursing, is a trained mental health first aid specialist. She is also Brazilian, I believe, by descent and is fluent in English and in Portuguese. Portuguese is a language that we do use in town, so it's a real benefit to us. Young mother, lovely woman, and I think she'll be a real addition to the department. So she would be the first request that I make for the conditional offer of employment. The conditions basically are she's completed everything on our end, but MPTC has some prerequisite physical requirements. So it would be based on her meeting their prerequisites to enter the academy. And that academy is due to start November 27th. So that would be the date I would be looking for, the effective date. I don't know if you wanted to vote on that before I move to the next?
Sure, we can, yeah.
So motion to approve the appointment of provisional student officer Ingrid Senna?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it. The second candidate is Timothy Riley. Timothy is a resident of Norwood, Mass. He's currently a corrections officer for the Norfolk, Norfolk County Sheriff's. He has his bachelor's degree in building and construction, construction technology. I would love to tell you I know what that is in. I don't. Very nice young man, extremely level-headed, seems genuinely interested in policing in Medfield, which was a pleasure to see during the interviews. So I think he'd make a wonderful addition. I'm requesting the same thing, a provisional student officer position contingent on him completing MPTC.
Do we have a motion, please?
Okay, motion to appoint provisional student officer effective November 27th, 2023, Timothy Riley?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
The next couple of things I have for you and thank you. So we currently obviously allow our officers to participate in private details. We also have officers from outside of our town work details. Some of the details require the use of cruiser. The cruisers, just so you know, are Chevys. GM currently estimates every engine idle hour is equal to 35 miles of wear and tear on the car. That is their estimate. We do utilize obviously fuel and tires and the engine's running. So I feel like it's an appropriate time for us to start charging a fee for the use of the vehicle. It is commonplace and has been for quite some time. We reached out to some of our neighboring agencies. We got about 24 responses. My recommendation based on the other agencies that do this type of thing would be a flat rate of $50 per four hours of use of the car. The cars are typically used when we're on Main Street North, areas where we know we need to slow traffic down before they enter into a construction zone.
And is the four, is the four hour like the minimum increment?
Yes, so by contract, yes.
Fundamentally half day, by half day kind of thing, sort of?
Yep. So the contract stipulated that the, anything up to four is four hours, anything after four is eight, anything after eight is 12. And this is just private details? This would only be private details, so town details would not be affected. We, we wouldn't have that cost.
And these car, the, the detail cars are a specially designated car or is it just one of the cruisers that we have?
We typically use our Ford Explorers that we have. So, yeah, we're trying not to put the wear on the Tahoe engines.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for this? Do you want to vote on this or?
I think I need your approval to set the rate.
Okay, motion please then.
All right, motion to approve a rate increase for a detail car?
And, and set the rate at $50 per four hours?
Is this, are we approving a rate increase or are we instituting a rate?
Instituting a rate.
Aye, okay. So motion to institute a rate increase for a detail car set at $50 for hours.
Second.
Not an increase, just a rate then.
Oh, so get rid of the word increase altogether. Okay, sorry. All right. So try this third time. Third time's the charm. Motion to approve a rate for detail car, $50, set for four hours.
Second.
All in favor?
Might not have been as smooth as you wanted, but.
I'm just watching, I'm just watching our town council to make sure we weren't going for four on that one. If you catch my vote tonight.
We voted.
Yes, yes, aye, aye, we did.
All right, two more things and then I'm done. I'd sent each of you a proposal for a motorcycle unit. I have made a request through Capitol that in, in place of a line cruiser this year or for fiscal year '25, that we purchase a motorcycle. In the proposal, and I, I'll just give you some of the, the facts. So the motorcycles allow us to respond to motor vehicle accidents quicker. That's really what the primary focus is, is our response to motor vehicle accidents and traffic enforcement. It allows us to maneuver quickly through the streets to place the motorcycle in areas that we wouldn't be able to place a cruiser to post for enforcement. Nationally, this is definitely an area that needs to be addressed. There were over 42,795 fatalities in the year 2022 and on a national level. Over 2.5 million people were injured. In Massachusetts during the 2022 year, we had 408 fatalities. That number is already up for 2023. And there were 132,561 total accidents. Medfield specifically in 2022 had two fatalities, 121 accidents with 21 of those resulting in injuries to one or more parties. This is an area I think we have a need for. Beyond the functionality of a motorcycle, I think it also is a great community tool. The reality of it is that when we have an officer in a cruiser, people are less likely to approach the officer. They seem somewhat enclosed. The motorcycle is, they're exposed, they're neat, they're steeped in tradition. Motorcycles have been, I think the oldest units are over 100 years old. They're used in community functions for parades, going down, touch a truck, these types of things. So I think they do bring more value to a department. There's a whole write-up on it, but I'll get to the nuts and bolts of why I think we need one. We are competing in a very difficult market for employees and not just competing to get them, but competing to keep them. Much as Chief Carrico spoke earlier, it's, it's critical right now. This is a critical time for policing. I can tell you, I'm hoping to have four candidates for you to hire and that's off of 262 people that we got. We have interviewed three people that would be interested in coming to the department, but unfortunately they do not have civil service status. So I cannot hire these trained police officers. But things like having a motorcycle unit will certainly generate interest from people who, that's their thing, that's their specialty. Like I said, it's a very prestigious unit within the department. And we also have a few of our officers now that ride and would be thrilled at the opportunity to have a motorcycle unit to ride year-round. I think it's something that helps us keep our people and generate some interest in getting laterals over. The cost effectiveness of it, all in, we're going to be under $33,000 for a purchase of the bike, graphics, lights and equipment. The bikes tend to have a 10-year lifespan, which is much greater than our cruisers. So we're talking about, you know, really $3,000 a year for a tool that I think we reap that benefit over and over again. I would love your input on it. As I said, I've presented it to the Capitol Committee, but happy to answer any questions you have.
Gus?
So first, Michelle, I have to say I'm disappointed you're not proposing a horse unit, but.
The horses are a lot more expensive than the motorcycle.
Gus has a horse, doesn't he?
And she has experience with horse units. But having said that, I got the email. Am I, I didn't, there was no attachment. There were, so I knew this was coming. But I didn't see anything attached to the email. Which is fine. You've explained about as much as I need to know at this stage, but if there was something I was supposed to get, I didn't get the details.
I am sorry. That is just a technology error. By technology error, I mean human one. I'll be happy to send it over to you.
The, you sort of answered the question I had, because one of the questions, if you have one motorcycle, how do you staff up? You know, is it one person has the motorcycle or is it two people have the motorcycle? But it sounds like you've actually got people who already have motorcycle licenses who are skilled on motorcycles. So the issue of, it would, it would. So the issue of, it would probably be a certain designated number of people that would be using the motorcycle, but I'm just curious, the logistics.
What I'd like to do is be able to rotate the use to different officers. I will say that just being an experienced rider is not enough. The company that we have our bid out from, which is the, really, it's the sole bidder for these types of bikes, they actually run the patrol motorcycle training, and will do it free of cost if we purchase the bike for them. So they'll take officers from our department. It's a forty-hour training class on the specifics of riding these police bikes, because they obviously are weighted a little differently with some of the equipment and used in a very different way than just street travel.
What brand, what make?
Harley-Davidson.
Okay. Sounds right, okay. Those are my questions.
So, I have a couple of questions on the motorcycle. So you answered a few of them just now that we'll be training. And I, how will you prioritize? Is it seniority that would end up having the rights to be the first in line to be the motorcycle unit? Or how does that go about?
So assignment is a management right.
Okay.
So that would be at my discretion.
Okay, okay. And then I'm going to deviate a little bit, but you made me think of when you said motorcycle. We had a canine dog in Medfield, and then the gentleman moved to Minnesota and he took the dog with him. Where are we with the canine dog?
So we're actually still looking at the, at getting another canine. I mean, I'll be blunt, our staffing has been difficult, and to train another canine takes about fourteen weeks. It's been difficult for me to justify sending somebody for fourteen weeks when I know that we really need the bodies and the boots on the ground now. We're still within our grant process, so we can definitely get another dog. I interviewed a candidate earlier this week who not only would love to come to Medfield, he's actually, we're doing a background. He's offered to work as a special until such time as we get out of civil service and then transfer here. But he said he'd love the opportunity to pick up the canine program again. So I think it's just a matter of the time on it.
Okay, all right. Because when I saw the info, it's funny, I had pink Christine, I'm like, I didn't get the packet. And I just, I meant that day to do it, I got distracted, and you just said it, I'm like, oh, I remember, I didn't get the packet. But I thought, was this me?
That's a me problem. It's very pretty, though.
And then from a perspective of using the motorcycle, so you have cars over there right now, vehicles, they're used twenty-four-seven. Would the, would the motorcycle unit be something that would again just fall in line? It's used twenty-four-seven, so each, each, whether it's the day shift or the evening shift, someone would be on it? Or the time where it would not really be used as much?
I probably wouldn't use it over the midnight shift, simply because visibility is a factor. So it's difficult enough to see motorcycles during the day. So I think just for officer safety reasons, we wouldn't. I do plan on using it, and we'll see where the, I can't say that expression, God, no. We'll say where people's interest is, because I do plan on using it year-round. I come from the city, we had a motorcycle unit, a six-to-eight motorcycles, and they rode all. Beautiful spring and summer weather and.
It's chilly and wet days, too. Do you, can you use that for speed enforcement, though?
Yes.
Because I would believe there's some good places in Medfield where you could have that parked when people talk about, you know, it's speeding, and sometimes you see a car, you can see that a little quicker and react.
Yeah, you know, so I, I mean, I do, the type of traffic enforcement I like is actually one that is multi-pronged, right? So we warn, we educate, and then we enforce. I don't like Gutsia policing where we hide the car and I jump out and we grab one person, because for the ten other people that drove by and didn't see the police car, we haven't done anything to affect their driving behavior. So when we're highly visible, I think we get a better result, which is to change behavior. That's ultimately our goal, it's not to generate revenue. The thing about having a motorcycle is it would allow us to do enforcement on areas like Pine Street, Causeway, where there's really not a safe place for us to pull the cruiser out of the way.
Yes.
We've had some wonderful residents who've allowed us to use their driveway. But ideally, being able to get on the narrow roads and just tuck the motorcycle on the side just opens a lot of other opportunities for us. And in all fairness, that is where we get some of our speeding is, you know, our main roads. We know we're going to get people going five to ten miles an hour over. It's less impactful on twenty-seven than it is on Nevo.
So you just answered a question that somebody, actually, just asked me over the weekend, that... So you, so you can place a police cruiser in a private driveway? If somebody's like, you know what, police want to put their car in my driveway because it is just a speed zone, and the street is a little bit too narrow, so that is something that is doable?
With their permission.
Yeah, with their permission, okay, that's good to know.
Yep.
Okay, all right, for all those watching, that's good to know.
Yes, and we do it regularly, so, happy to have it.
I have neighbors on Metacomet that may take you up on that.
All right. Any other questions on this?
I don't have any, thank you very much.
I have one trivia question for you that's sort of only peripherally related.
Oh, no.
Do you by any chance know who it is that races motorcycles on North Meadows Road? And whether they're doing it in Medfield? It's definitely north of the hospital. It seems like it's on twenty-seven and maybe going all the way into Sherborn. It's reliable at seven o'clock at night, sometimes it's reliable late in the night. I went out looking for him like three nights ago. And doggone, as soon as I got out there, it was silent, there were a lot, there was a fair number of cars on. But I'm just curious, because I, first I thought it was people racing on the state hospital property. I said, no, A, they're going too fast, they're traveling too far. So that's like, that puts it on North Meadows Road. But I'm not even sure it's in Medfield, just curious whether.
I think it's in Medfield.
You think it's in Medfield?
I hear it at my house on Copperwood.
It is in Medfield.
And they're often winding out.
Yes, we have identified it.
Okay.
The vehicle has taken off on us, we called off the pursuit, because my... Public safety will always outweigh a traffic violation, but we are confident that we have the individual identified.
I mean, it's a good, if you're going to race a bike, it's probably a good, nice straightaway without a lot of traffic to do it. But it, and if it wasn't every night, we'd probably just kind of roll our eyes. But it's like every night that that happens, and it goes on for quite a while.
Yes.
Till I went out looking for him, then it was quiet as church mouse in there, yeah.
I have one more question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So this, because early in your report, you talked about Michelle being assigned back to SRO. So I'm trying to understand those assignments. So is that something that you do on an annual basis, or how does that work?
So assignments, again, are a management right.
Okay.
Shelley has been in the position for a while, so there's a training that has to go with that. The training is a couple of weeks long, and then they have annual certifications that they have to do. I will say, and I'm going to get some probably hate mail, I'm sure, on this, but Shelley has been doing this position for at least five years that I have been here. I said it in my interview, so it's not going to be a surprise, and this is not a surprise to Officer Manganello, as I've discussed it with her. I intend to rotate a new officer into the position next year.
Okay.
So I offered her the opportunity that for her, if she had one place to be this year, would it be detectives, or would it be the SRO position? She asked for SRO, and she's been wonderful in the position, so we were happy to give it back to her.
Okay, and that's good, and that's, I'm just curious, knowing that it's always good to have, you know, two, three deep in any department or something.
Yes.
So knowing that someone else next year will be assigned to that, so we've got the bench strength.
And I still see Shelley having a role as a liaison for the schools. I mean, I'm not fool-hearted either to take that institutional knowledge and lose it. So I think there's still going to be a role there for her. I just, we're going to need to, you know, offer opportunities to other people.
Okay.
Officer Manganello is one of the few people that I've seen, one of your few officers that I've actually seen, because I've served on committees with her at the schools, and I think she's very good with the students.
I couldn't agree more. She's, she's actually extremely active in town, definitely very, very passionate about our community.
So we have a question coming from Chris McHugh Potts, which says, quote, "In all fairness, as it relates to staffing constraints, how is it possible that Medfield Police was able to spare an officer for about seven to ten days to chaperon the spring twenty-twenty-three Medfield High School trip to Italy?"
The officer utilized their own time.
I'm sorry?
The officer utilized personal time off.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Thank you so much, Chief.
Last thing, I'm sorry, MOU. So we have a MOU for Sims. I feel like, Gus, you may have some questions.
I have a lot.
All right, I'm ready.
Let me, we can talk in more detail for everything, but, because I don't, all my questions are really just questions that are around the same thing. When I read this MOU, what was very confusing to me was whether the Sims is a tool intended to be used to help maybe regional law enforcement detect illegal drug use, or whether it was a tool that, with what, how it's worded, it definitely does that to a degree, or at least coordinates that information across different jurisdictions in the area. But it seems to be trying to move itself into the social services sphere. So there's talk about establishing an outreach officer in the police department. And as I'm reading it, I'm saying, isn't this Medfield Outreach's job to do this? And what I saw in the overall thing, what I saw was a real overlap that has to be concerned. Some of the wording in this MOU sounds like wording that would be written by someone in law enforcement, but it's being applied to people that it's not clear to me are actually the targets of law enforcement. So when you talk about deploying an outreach worker, that's like, for me, that's, that's police jargon to do something which is actually a social services activity. So given, given what we've been trying to do, which is to pull the social services capabilities of the town together under Medfield Outreach, this actually feel like it was working against that. And I couldn't, I was trying to figure out, where's the logical, you know, is there some logical line that, well, when you're on this side of the line, the reason we have to do it is because it's legal? But I couldn't find that, because there's some places where there's follow-up on the police side for people who need treatment, but who are not necessarily, you know, under suspicion of anything. So it felt muddled to me to be, you know, simple about it. That's, it seemed like it's cross-threading with our Medfield Outreach activities.
So in some ways it does, but it doesn't in many others. So this particular system, this Critical Incident Management System, while it speaks about substance abuse here, really encompasses much more. It encompasses vulnerable populations like mental health issues as well. This program was actually created by law enforcement for law enforcement. What happens is that we tend to work in silos, right? So you have, rescue may go to a home for an overdose, and we may not know that as a law enforcement side of things. Or somebody could go to another town and overdose there. There are some, obviously, some law enforcement applications for it, where we see overdoses taking place, where we see mental health issues. We know that the ancillary crimes that are associated with drug use may then start to permeate the area. So if we see we're having an overdose, then we say we're having some motor vehicle break-ins, right? Should they be tied? So there's certainly a law enforcement application. But for us, the reality of it is, we are not, our role is becoming one that is more social services. Just because we are having contact, there's a lot of crossover between mental illness and drug use and law enforcement. It's to keep us from working in silos and start working collectively. We're not arresting ourselves out of an opioid crisis. That is absolutely clear. The idea for outreach is not that we provide the outreach, we just simply assist in providing them the resources that they could go to. So Medfield Outreach being one of them. We're there to help facilitate that. Statistically, if we can get to somebody within the first, we actually put forty-eight hours, the true statistic is twenty-four. If we can get to somebody within the first twenty-four hours of an overdose, they're most likely to accept treatment. And that's how we have to start to partner. So our sharing this information is because we have the legal capability to share it. But we don't become the facilitators of getting them treatment. We are simply there to say, here are your resources, and.
But there's, but there's, there were provisions in here for follow-up visits for people who refuse treatment. So it starts, the, you know, I look in this research I've done around the issue of the defunding the police arguments. If there's a legitimate piece of that around rethinking policing, from what I understand, the one place that police officers by themselves don't really want to get called is domestic disturbances. That's, I had a brother-in-law who was a Lexington cop, and he goes, these are the things you don't want to get, these calls. The best, the only, not the only one, but the best example I've heard that sounded like a police department that was doing a constructive thing was the, it's called the Kahoots Program, I think it's out in Portland, Oregon, which, I don't necessarily look to Portland, Oregon, is the source of all my great ideas. But in this particular case, and this was a couple of years ago that I'd heard, the issue is that there are certain calls that it's more appropriate for a social worker to be the one that's hold, and I can imagine, this would have to be a social worker with a certain degree of police training, because they would be going to a domestic violence call, let's say, and they would literally be the interface to avoid having it escalate to the kinds of unfortunate accidents that occur when somebody who's bad at their spouse suddenly decides that the police officer at the door, it's their fault, and then things can go south. I, I think I'm going to have to better understand how this thing doesn't bleed over into Medfield Outreach, because Medfield Outreach does what, what you were just saying about what the police would do here, is we don't provide the treatment, we refer the treatment. Well, Medfield Outreach does that, and it feels to me like, it's not like I disagree with the concept, but I was reading, I was going, gosh, there's HIPAA issues here, and maybe, maybe law enforcement's immune from HIPAA requirements, but there's certain things in the information that's being provided, that's health information. And I'm saying, does, I understand why, I understand how the argument goes in this direction when police get involved with people who, aside from whatever it was that caused the police to get triggered to be involved in the first place, you discover, ah, this is a, you know, this is a drug situation where somebody's, you know, addicted to drugs. How they got it might be how you got it, but there are a lot of reasons. But it doesn't feel to me like we've thought through the division of responsibilities between Medfield Outreach and what this memorandum indicates an outreach work, an outreach person inside the police department would be doing. Maybe part of that is, I would, if Kathy McDonald looked and had inputs on this to say, oh, yeah, well, we don't want to touch this thing with a ten-foot pole, and it really would help us, then a lot of my concerns would probably be addressed, but.
So this is actually, we've been participating in this program for years. We don't do multiple follow-ups, so we do, it is, I just reread it, because I wanted to make sure I was clear on it. We just do a follow-up from an incident. If there is an overdose death, we'll reach out to the family within thirty days with it. The fact is, this is about us being able to share information from a multi-jurisdictional point. So I can give you, without, without using some specifics, we had an individual who had self-harm thoughts. That individual ended up going to another town, and that town was able to access our records showing that they had self-harm thoughts and try and get appropriate care. Unfortunately, they were too late at the time, and the person had committed suicide. So, but this was one of those times where that information sharing between agencies allowed the officers to know the appropriate level that they had to respond to this call with and what they were walking into. So that type of information sharing is really the important part of it for us. And then, you know, obviously, the potential to help people with this addiction.
So it may be that, at least for Medfield, a clearer understanding, and I'm not, I'm not the person qualified to say what that needs to be, but a clearer understanding of how, I'll say how responsibilities are divided, but I actually think maybe I'm caring more about how responsibilities are coordinated and collaborated to get to... It feels like there's capabilities in town from a treatment standpoint that would probably be better than the treatment skills that someone inside a police department would be likely to have, just through sheer experience.
Yeah, we don't, so we don't provide any treatment at all. We really just serve as one component to provide, we have an outreach officer that provides resources.
But that outreach officer is in the police department, or is it?
Yes.
So.
So right now, actually, it is Shelley Manganello. So right now, actually, it is Shelley Manganello, who also works with Medfield Outreach.
Yeah.
So I'm, I don't want to speak out of school that they may have already discussed how that interfaces.
Okay, because I mean, I've been reading things like, treatment professionals should not place themselves in proximity to officers when those officers anticipate arresting the subject. It's like, well, that's placing the treatment professionals on the scene. And if they're inside the police department, are they treatment officials, or are they? It just, what I think I need to do is scan what I've written here, and don't be, you know me well enough not to be put off. I use red ink because it shows up, not because I'm furious about stuff. But it might make sense for me to scan these and then send it to you, and then we can, we can talk about what it is. The bottom line for me was, it felt like they were over, they were unclear overlapping responsibilities between what this was proposing and what I think Medfield Outreach is already doing. And so I may find out that, oh, yeah, you're right, they're overlapping, but we've already figured that out because we've been doing this for years, in which case, I don't have a problem. But the way I just read it in a vacuum, it was like, this is really, you know, bleeding way over onto the Medfield Outreach sphere. And, and, you know, maybe Kathy McDonald has a different view of it than I do, or I'm not sure if she's seen this yet or not. But it seems like we should kind of make sure we've got that together in the right way.
I'm happy to speak with Shelley and Kathy on it. Like I said, I'm not too proud to say I don't know if these conversations have taken place. So I'm happy to engage them and get back to you with some answers on it.
And I'll, I'll scan this.
I'll scan the motorcycle proposal.
Okay, yeah.
Fair enough. So my attitude is, has always been for a long time that the police are actually in the human service business as well as outreach, serving the people that need services, human services. And that, actually, I had suggested to Chief Meany that he consider taking social workers with him on certain calls. And he told me that he was already using Riverside Community Care at times. And I don't know if you guys are still doing that, but that makes a ton of sense to me. And I don't know if that's what.
Well, so I'm not really arguing with you. If you're using the professionals that have the in-depth skills, I think it's, it may be one thing to have an EMT who can be a firefighter. I think it's a whole nother thing to have a law enforcement officer who's also a social worker. So it's the skill sets that.
It's coming to the same issue from very different vantage points. But, you know, my model would have some sort of cooperation between the different skill sets.
So there are a number of communities that do utilize a program like that, where you have a clinician that rides with a police officer, and they attend certain calls. They work closely with the police. So when you read some of that language about not going in, you know, the officer's job is to assess the threat level and then call for the clinician to come in when they feel it's appropriate. We did look at exploring a partnership for a program like that with Dover, and then some of the grant funding fell through. But it is becoming more commonplace. And I think that's, I think that some of that is society recognizing that we don't just do law enforcement anymore, that, you know, we are interacting with these vulnerable populations on a regular basis, and that they're not really enforcement actions, or if we can do anything to diffuse them before they become enforcement actions, that that's the most appropriate course of action. But they are not, just so you're clear, they're not police officers that act as clinicians. They are actually trained and licensed clinicians, so.
Yeah, it's probably a very different skill set.
Yes. You don't want me to be your therapist.
If that's what we're talking about here, then this is more of an organizational question on my part around how does the, how does the town configure its resources in the way that makes sense to do that? I couldn't pick that up from the MOU.
And I can, I'm on the, I was gonna say this in my selectmen's report, but I'm actually on the Medfield Cares About Prevention, and Shelley's on that as well. So when I see that you're already leveraging her resources, it makes sense. And, I mean, the one thing I see day in and day out, unfortunately, on the news is so many of the police interactions these, these days are dealing with folks that are challenged with mental illness. And so, you know, to me, having somebody on this, on your staff that has the ability, I think in this town right now, I think, I sensed Kathy, just being on the call the other day, Kathy and Mary and Kyler, there's a very good working relationship, and they seem to have, to be very open. And it was dialogue during our leadership meeting. So, you know, when I read this, I took a little different from you, not saying that what you're saying is wrong. It's just that, yes, I, I would like to think that you have someone who's, who's, I'm not saying they're a social worker, but their skill set is already engaged with the group that we are relying a lot in Medfield for. So I just took it a little bit different reading it. Maybe it's because, again, I've been exposed to what we're trying to do here with prevention, with Kathy's group. So, I mean, I applaud that, you know, knowing that Shelley's SRO, and also stepping in here from, from the prevention side, the document made sense. But I certainly, I'm intrigued to see what you're gonna exchange.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to take, take a look and get you the answers that you need. Yeah. And just for grants, we are waiting on grants for a video recording system, nine-one-one. You two, as you know, are in E nine-one-one station. Nine-one-one used to do all of our recording for us. They're getting out of the recording business, so we have to procure our own recording system for our nine-one-one calls and our business line. We're required to do that. We could probably get a grant for the machine. There'd be a contract, a maintenance contract that will be a new cost for us. We are applying again for our power phone grant. Power phone is where we conduct all of our training for our dispatchers and cross-training our officers on E nine-one-one as well. And the last grant is for, I believe, oh, the last grant is for a fingerprint machine. Ours was outdated, and when they went to do the updates, the system could no longer support the updates. So we should be getting a grant, I think that one's all set, to cover the cost of the machine. I didn't want to be outdone by Chief.
Well, thank you very much. The progress that you, the department has made, and just the positivity, you know, having Barry come on board, and so many of the new officers, just in the last year to fifteen months, you know, kudos to you. And I know that the vibe is extremely positive. I love seeing, again, I saw a couple of the officers at the Scarecrow event. You see them up at State Hospital for some of the Belfords, you know, just kind of strolling through. That interfacing with the community is awesome, and it's a hundred percent your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, they're a great group. I really couldn't be luckier. Thanks, Al.
Good to hear it.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Christine, you're the next.
I am, but I'm gonna kick it right back to you. At our last meeting, you had adopted all of the goals, not by formal vote, but by consensus, except for you had wanted to still think about what you wanted to use as a goal under our environmental quality and sustainability of our community. We had talked about some tree planting, we had talked about, I think, a lot of different issues, but you were gonna all go home and think about it, which I'm sure you all did. Judging by all of you looking at me.
I sent you an email today, but we also were gonna talk about something about, did we clear up the whole Tom Cap discussion?
No, that, this is part of the whole environmental quality thing, yeah.
So I do like the idea of the tree planting. We've talked, Gus, I know, has talked about that for sustainability. I've talked about it just for making the town look better. I like that. And I think that you raised it as an issue with the cost of doing it, where does the money come from?
Yeah, I think we, so, you know, we've been talking about it since the last meeting. We're happy to investigate and recommend a tree planting program that we can get started. And give you the pros, the cons, how we'd fund it, and then decide if we want to move forward with it.
See, if people want to donate, somebody passes, can they just, I mean, I know, like, when my, when my aunt passed away, she actually, she donated her body to science, but then in lieu of that, she's part of some, up in Minnesota, some large trees being planted, and one will be planted in her name. So, I mean, if somebody is passing and they want to donate to the town, a tree to be placed wherever in town, it's, it doesn't have to be with a plaque, it's just one of those trees that will contribute over time.
Yeah, and maybe if we had plaques, it would really encourage people to make that donation, make it maybe a little larger to endow the watering as well as the planting.
Well, I don't know, the only thing I want to be careful with is if the intent is to really try to build a forest, like.
Yeah, yeah, I think my issue is, we should figure out how to go about getting credit for carbon sequestration for purposes of buying offsets. So that's not just sort of a decentralized, if you'd like to put in a tree, we got a spot for it. This gets at the issue of Tom Cap and to what extent we're transferring sustainability slash environmental slash net carbon, carbon zero goals onto Christine's shoulders at this particular point. I think my, I think last meeting we had, I was saying, look, if all we're talking about is the tree planting, it doesn't strike me, I don't mind that we can leave it there. I just see that as being sort of a mini-goal relative to anything else that doesn't exactly deserve its own category. It's just that, oh, by the way, how about planting some trees for us? If that's what we want to do, I'm neutral between leaving it in and have it be that, or taking it out and just having fewer goals. If we're talking about true environmental action, right now, nobody in town knows exactly how you go about getting a credit for carbon sequestration in a forest that's designated. I don't think we have to plant new forests. I actually think we probably can designate forests we have and get credit for them.
Twenty-five acres for regular flowers, yeah.
And a first step for somebody to take, not necessarily Christine, would be to simply understand how the, how offset credits are granted for carbon sequestration that's undertaken by towns or cities. Seattle knows how to do it, they've already done it. And they did it in like a year's time, so they didn't grow the trees, they had the trees. So that's actually where I was coming from, is, right now, nobody knows how to do it.
Have her explore it and come back and see.
Yeah, well, figure it out.
That would be, if that's, I mean, if that's, from my standpoint, if that's a reasonable goal.
It means plant trees down the road, yeah.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with leaving that little, the tree planting one in there. I don't even care about that, I'm not against planting trees now. But to me, it's really that knowledge. And Christine's, sincerely, it's also a question of, I'm not, I'm not in favor of throwing the Tom Cap on your shoulders and say, make it so, number one. So if we do some of this stuff, I'd like to know that that's also something that you think is reasonable to be in your target zone.
Yeah, I think, I think we have the bandwidth to investigate how it could work for Medfield.
Okay. I have some leads you might be able to.
Okay, great. And we have some ideas about a tree planting program. We would probably shy away from memorial tree planting, in memoriam tree planting, because that's been an issue for us in the past, when we've had to take down a sick or diseased tree, or the Liberty Tree out in front of the town hall. So, but we, we are gonna come up with, we have some really good ideas we'd like to present to you later on this year about that.
Even if you literally had an area, and then like, it doesn't, you might not know exactly what tree, but like, if you're, like, I, I can go off and explain the program my aunt got involved in. I don't know exactly where a tree is, but it's in the spirit of what they're trying to do.
Yep.
Okay, anything else on goals then for the town administrator?
Do you want to vote those, and we'll?
Sure.
Move forward?
All right. So motion to approve town administrator's FY twenty-four goals?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Action items, discussion and possible vote on the appointment to the school building committee. And we have five applicants now. Gus, you wanna start?
Yeah, I'll start. First, first off, I thought all five, there were some people that had the backgrounds that are appropriate for a select board appointment to a greater degree than some others. But there wasn't a single one of them that I didn't say, well, I don't, even the ones that I said, I'm not sure if you're the best choice for the school building committee, but I have, I have some ideas of where you could be very helpful, given your, your skill set. So just a general comment on all five of them. And I commented, I think, last time, that another thing that jumped out at me was the number of recent arrivals here in town, who basically said, I already like this town enough that I want to, I want to try to contribute to it. And that, that made a pretty big impression on me, because I don't, I don't know that when I moved here twenty, twenty-eight years ago, that I was necessarily that sure I wanted to help the town out six, six to twelve months into my arrival. So I was impressed with that. With that as an introduction, of the five, I thought there were three solid candidates relative to the backgrounds. I forced myself to rank order them, but I actually was genuinely interested in hearing what the two of you thought, because I actually think all three of them are solid. The three I did in the order I did it was Charles Intravia, Andrew Tuccio, and John Messina. The other person who was not quite, I gave a, I kind of like outlined his name in a dash line, because it's like, well, I can see how some of this is relevant, but not quite at the target, and that was Michael Cass. And then Michael Eisenman, again, I sincerely appreciated his willingness to step forward. He struck me more as he would have been an appropriate add if the school committee had needed to add somebody where they were looking for parents of young kids more than him bringing actual building experience. So mine, my, my preference here would be, I would go with one of the first three. My order was Charles, Andrew, and John, but I wasn't, I wanted to hear what you thought.
So, it's funny, I went back to the document that we used, and I looked at who reapplied. And my number two back then was John Messina. And part of my, my positioning back then was, I think we were also trying to make sure that we were covering all the demographics. And that was where, if I'm not mistaken, when we selected Robert Donahue, one of his, the perks was that he was, you know, an older resident, not, to your point. And I'm not, listen, I, I will echo your sentiments. All five are fantastic, I think it's wonderful when people step up. I, I, there was no one on here that I was like, yeah, that's, that's not a good fit. They all had different strengths and weaknesses, but when I was looking it over, and I realized, I'm like, oh, that's right, John, I literally had number two, I have my spreadsheet from our meeting. And the fact that he has contractor experience, and I remember, I forget what meeting it was, somebody talked about, and it might have been when I was meeting with Chief Carrico, and he talked about when he saw the final results of the, like, when he walked around the new police fire station, there were certain things that just were straight out missing. And he was like, I don't know how they missed that. Right, so when I looked at John's, and this is why I think, again, he was number two last go around, he's built schools, he knows how to lay things out, and I don't, I mean, I thought that, that reinforced some of the things, we don't want to have the I-guches five years from now. But, but don't disagree, literally, I might, might was John one, Charles Intravina two, and Andrew Tucco, Tuccio, three. A lot having to do with the backgrounds and, but again, no one's, no one's a definite no, but if I, if you've asked me to rank it, I did John, Charles, and Andrew.
Well, to your, to your point about John, the other thing, you didn't actually specifically mention just now, but one of the things that jumped out at me for him, I have a feeling he's got more in-depth experience on the ground, hauling stuff around, doing the real work, which I took as a positive, especially one of the things that jumped out in his background, I think it's in the letter that he included, was that he had experience in how to manage the, moving the pieces when, you know, if the project were at Dale. And if you had to sit there and do part of a project, and then move classrooms, move operations, until you had a phased construction project, it sounded like he's done that. So when you just mentioned, just looking at the new fire, you know, building, safety building, pointing things out, it's like, that's a pretty, that's a pretty on-the-ground level of expertise. But, you know, people grounded in practical reality, aside from design work, is maybe not a bad idea, especially with some of the options and things we talked about in the past when we looked at this project, so. So far, we're, we got the same three, it's different order, and like I said, I would be happy with any of the three of them, so.
Eileen, what was your order, John, and then number two was which?
Charles.
Charles, okay, that's what I wrote down, okay, I just. I, I just had two. I had Charles Intravir and John Messina. And I didn't sort of rate them one over the other. I think either one of them would be great. And I agree, I was very happy that, at the quality of all five, and that we had such well-qualified people, and as you said, Gus, people that had been in town relatively short amount of time stepping forward, but those were my two. John Messina, by the way, did work on the public safety building.
On this, on ours here?
Yeah. I think so.
I think you're right, no, I think you're right, he did advise on that, so I.
He's come to my office hours a couple of times, so I've gotten to know him.
Oh, good.
He has a water, cloudy water issue on Pleasant Court, because he's at the end of the water line.
I'm fine going with him. We kind of have a dead heat, I think, strictly on rank ordering, given that Pete didn't rank order him.
You go with John?
Right.
Oh, should we motion for, for John or?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good with that.
All right, so a motion to vote to appoint John Messina to the school building committee?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye aye. Okay. Other board and committee reappointments, accept resignation of David Scharf, Connie Sweeney, Brad Phipps from the Medfield Historic District Commission and appoint Lauren Costello to the Medfield Historic District Commission for a two-year term and appoint Lizanne Woods to the Medfield Historic District Commission for a three-year term. Do we have a motion that encompasses all of that?
Before we go there, I had a, just a question. I don't know if anybody knows the answer. The one, two, three people who resigned at the same time from the Historic District Commission, I'm just wondering, was, was there any?
You didn't hear about the drama? No, I'm kidding. They're moving out of town. No.
Well, David moved out of town a while ago, right?
No, they're moving out of town.
The reason I'm sensitive is that we had a resignation from the Historic District Commission when the Clark Tavern didn't.
Right, right, right.
And although I think we made the right decision on where to go with that, I was genuinely regretful that the person who stepped down stepped down. So I just want to make sure there was.
No, 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 no. These three are relocating out of Medfield.
Okay.
And are we assigning, so David, Connie and Brad, do we know what terms they had? So are these, is like, is Lauren replacing David? Lizanne replacing Connie?
Yeah, replacing their terms. I'm not sure which, who's replacing who, but.
I didn't know if we need to know that, okay.
Yeah.
Well, we are doing two-year terms for Lauren and three years for Lizanne.
But there's three people, that's why I wasn't sure if there was one.
Yeah, I don't think you, I don't think you, there's still a person we're looking for.
Right. That's why I didn't, I didn't know if there was, like, if David was one, Connie was two and Brad was three, in theory, are we not filling David's?
Can you craft a motion to just track the?
Yep, motion to accept the resignation of David Scharf, Connie Sweeney, Brad Phipps from the Medfield Historic District Commission and appoint Lauren Costello to the Medfield Historic Commission for a two-year term as well as appoint Lizanne Woods to the Medfield Historic District Commission for a three-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye aye. Next, we have a vote to accept the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, DOE, our green communities grant for two hundred thousand.
I think that's an easy motion, yes?
Yeah.
Motion to accept the Mass Department of Energy Resource Green Communities Grant of two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye aye. Number twelve, request to sign a letter of support for the four ninety-five Metro West Partnership FY twenty-four application to the Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program.
No story behind that? We're good?
No, we're good. We're, we're a partner, member with four ninety-five partnership. I served on the board for a number of years and now Maria has taken my place in serving with them and they're just a fantastic organization, very helpful to us.
All right, so I motion to sign the letter of support for four ninety-five Metro West Partnership Fiscal Year twenty-four application to the Regional Economic Development Organization Grant Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye aye. Number thirteen, request to accept a gift of one thousand dollars from the First Baptist Church. Thank you. To be placed in a gift fund for the board and committee recognition.
I can give a little background on this one. And you also need to know one administrative thing. I don't think it'll affect our willingness to accept money from the First Baptist Church. Apparently years ago, I don't even know how, some, some time ago, the First Baptist Church used to, used to host a dinner for town employees every year. And then what happened is apparently the Board of Health came by and inspected their kitchen facilities and shut the church down. So they, that kind of went away because they couldn't, then they still do not yet, I think, have a functioning kitchen to do things like that. So the reason the tradition went away was that the, the kitchen went away.
We've met the enemy and it's us.
Yeah, well, for, for, and you know, editorially, speaking broadly about all of the churches in the town, I think the role that the churches played in Medfield, actually oftentimes collectively as a community of churches, was much more significant fifteen or twenty years ago than it is now. And I, despite that fact, I think in general, our community, communities in general benefit from having institutions like churches that are vibrant, that do, do look at the community and look to serve the community and, and try to do good things. So that it's not just a question of what's the town doing for its residents, but in fact, we have a true community where there's some glue that brings people together in different ways. The last few years, it has not been that obvious to me that that's, you know, the trend has not been going in the direction of strange, stronger and more vibrant church communities that are deliberately contributing. You know, things go up and down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because MCC, I, I know they do quite a bit. I mean, I, I see friends post constantly. They're constantly doing things for young kids, for music to play, so yeah, so.
And I would agree, individual churches are doing, what I'm saying is the, the sense of community that I saw several years ago is not the same cohesion that it was back then. And the reason I know is because I had lots of kids that were, you know, I had kids in schools and I knew a lot about what was going on. I've actually had contact with several of the churches in town since the, since I've been here. So interestingly, I thought this was, you know, an interesting effort by a church that has a pretty small congregation to try to re-energize something in that direction. And the, and the interest was to make this donation and basically left it up to the town to figure out the best way to send a message of thanks to really town employees, but we broadened it to town volunteers.
Are we using this, this for the event coming up?
So we are not spending a thousand dollars on this year's event. We're, we're hoping it will, it will serve us for, for many years.
So the administrative thing you need to know is that the church actually sent this check to us earlier in the year, but we have to accept it here in order for the town to get it. And by the time it made it onto the agenda here, the six months the check was good for.
No.
Has expired. So I'm suggesting that we accept it.
We should not move that slow, people. Come on.
So I'm suggesting that we, we accept the check in the faith that the church will issue a replacement check.
I don't know. If I was them, I'd be like, you know, it obviously didn't mean that much. I would have moved a little quicker to get that cash in the bank.
So anyway, that's, I, I have the action to go pursue a replacement check.
Grovels and say, we'll move quicker.
I will grovel.
All right, so I motion that we accept the gift of a thousand dollars from the First Baptist Church to be placed in a gift fund for board and committee recognition?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
And number fourteen, request to approve a contract with Spark Energy for Sustainable Coordinator Services through June thirty, twenty twenty-four, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Susan McPhee.
Too quick, yeah. Are there any scope changes? Just pretty much?
No, I think it's pretty much exactly the same as we had. I think we just clarified the solar project, but yeah.
And then the other is an administrative comment, an attachment. A, if you look at the numbering, there's one through four and then it does one through four again. So I don't know if the second one through four are four subbullets of number four or if for some reason the numbering resets. That's purely administrative.
I'll take a look at that. Are we good?
We're good.
All right. Motion to approve the contract with Spark Energy for Sustainability Coordination Services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye aye. Do we have any citizen comment, Christine or Frank?
No prefer, Bill.
No, we have nothing right now.
Okay, then on the consent agenda, we've got two items, request to place signs at the usual locations to promote ticket sales for the Lowell Mason Holiday, House Holiday Concert at St. Edward's Church for the two weeks leading up to the event on, on December second. Secondly, request to place signs at the usual locations to promote Medfield Cubs Cup Pack one thirteen Pancake Breakfast for the two weeks leading up to the event on November nineteen.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Minute meetings. I finally got around to looking at them, so are you guys set to go on all of those or?
I am all the way done except for June twentieth and eighteenth.
Same here. I couldn't get to those.
Almost got the twentieth done before we came here tonight.
Okay.
How about yourself, Pete? Are you done?
I'm, I've done them all now, so.
Show off.
I wasn't at the, at the March twenty-one meeting, so I won't vote on that one, although I did make a change.
Does it say you were there?
Before I realized, someone keeps putting on the, whoever does the minutes keeps putting on it that we, we are opening each meeting by opening the hearing. So every, every time I saw that, I took it out. I, I didn't take it out of the June sixth one, I think, or one of them, but all the other ones, I, I saw it. And I did take that one out before I realized I hadn't been at that meeting.
So I was okay with all of them, but I had minor edits on February twenty-first, March seventh, May tenth, May twenty-third, June sixth. And I had a lot of edits. Most of them were mechanical on March twenty-first and April fourth. So the one that you, one of the ones you missed that you still changed anyway, I had, there, there were, I made more substantive changes to the, those two meeting minutes, but not radical, you know, not voluminous radical changes to it. I think, I think the March twenty-first one was the discussion we had with the energy committee, so that one, I spent some time on, as I recall. So that's, but.
I did those ones so long ago, I forget the changes.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you've, if you've seen, I just want to make sure, those two in particular, I think it's important for you to realize I didn't just simply correct spelling errors and add commas. I actually did a little bit more on those, but it wasn't like I blew it up. It's just that I did all the spelling errors and commas and I made a few changes.
Yeah, we, we all seem to have some changes. Some of us had more than others, but did, did you want to address any of your edits or not?
I'm not gonna lie, I, I did March, April, May, 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 June, like three meetings ago, so I actually forget my edits on those. But, but I, they were all good. I mean, nothing, nothing, and I, I watched YouTube when I do it. So when I actually make my edits, it's because I'm literally watching it and able to make the comments, whether, like the one I just did, I think it was on the twentieth, we, for some reason or another, we switched the agenda, but it was copied as if we didn't switch the agenda. And Kathy McDonald comes on at the very end of the meeting, but yet all of her recap is in the very beginning of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Like silly little things like that. But it's that way if somebody's watching, reading the minutes. It was the meeting.
It's like the, the video clip?
Well, it, no, we, we just, I don't know why, but on the agenda, she comes in at the very end. It was when we were doing your goals again. It was number, we, we addressed her again and we addressed the, the week, the meeting before.
I thought the changes you made were fine. And Pete, the one I'm most concerned about is if you've, if you looked at the March twenty-first meeting minutes since our last meeting, then you saw the changes that I made. But given that you weren't at that meeting, given that the topic of that meeting was the energy committee intense conversation that we had, I want, I didn't want to just slip that one by for sure. You need, you, you've seen it, if you've already looked at it.
Yeah, no, I, I read the minutes today. But, but, you know, no, since I wasn't there, I wasn't going to make any suggested edits. That didn't seem appropriate.
Well, then I guess we can, I'm.
All right, so then we can approve.
Before we, before you do that, on, on the May twen-ten, you made a note about Gus crossing something out. It was the Mole Gulay comments about the, the Philip Street weight limit sign. And I had the same reaction. I wasn't sure why you crossed that out, Gus, because that was talked about.
It was the wording of it that was wrong. I'd have to look at it again, but it was the wording that was wrong.
It's funny, you did that and I, I'm watching YouTube and I'm like, no, it's exactly what he said. So, so what, you were deleted? I quite, I'm not sure. I typed in, why I'm not sure why you said that because that's not, that's actually what he said.
All right, well, okay, so I'll, then if you switch it back, that's fine.
Nobody switched it back. We just both noted that.
Yeah.
We remembered it.
When I read it in the minutes, the wording, which could have been what I actually said, but not what I should have said, I forget how it was worded. What it, what it boiled down to is it said the sign was at the end of the street. When it wasn't, it's in the middle of the street or it made it sound like it was the sign was both ways. That's what I reacted to when I read it. It's not.
It's not, it's not, it wasn't crucial. It was just like, well, you crossed it out. I'm like, no, that's what he said. I mean, literally, because again, I watched YouTube when I, when I do the minutes. I was like, I'm not sure why you crossed it out because.
I remember, I remember, I don't remember exactly what I changed. I remember I made the change because it didn't sound like the sign was in the middle.
You just crossed it out, the whole paragraph, whole sentence.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't dramatic, but whatever you did, I just, my comment under yours was, Gus, I'm not quite sure why you said that because that's, that's actually what was said.
Mine mimic yours because I remember, I remembered it. I wasn't watching.
I would almost suggest that you ignore my corrections if two people said it didn't, you know, it was what I said. And I would just say, yep, get rid of my correction on that one.
It wasn't, again, it wasn't like wildly materialized. It just was like.
It was, it had to do with how I read that section in the minutes, so. But two people said, it's what I said, put it back, ignore my correction.
So I, I had one more specific change. Eileen, you added, it was like numbers, four, five, five, four, three.
No, I think that was a typo. I was on it today. I looked at it and I'm like.
That probably shouldn't be there.
Yeah, no, no, I removed that today. I know exactly what you're talking about.
And then I had a, a general comment, Christine, which is whoever's doing the minutes uses first names for people. Not for the three of us, but anybody that comes before, so like when Jerry Potts came to the board to talk about the Open Space Committee, it refers to him as, I think Jeremiah. I mean, I, I kept looking at the name and saying, is that Jerry?
It was.
But I think, I think it's more appropriate either to call him Mr. Potts or just call all of us by our last names. So you know, Peterson, da, da, da.
So I did catch something that like, so, so when we do the beginning of those meeting minutes and we say who's in attendance, I don't think Bill gets put in there. We, we.
We don't, we don't list attendees at the minutes.
Okay, only people might be presenting. Okay, got it. Just want to make sure.
That's it, I'm not going to.
I mean, you're a footnote on all.
Just in case somebody does like a track, like, hey, Bill's not on this one. Where was he that night?
See, I think what's really important is we notice when he's not here, right? That's, that's when you get a little asterisk.
And, and what was really?
Twice.
Maybe we can just put a standard format on our citizen comment and press it and go, Bill Musar was here, but didn't choose to say anything. Put that in as part of the heading.
And I think, Chris, what was really noticeable to me was reading them all together was that somebody, we, we changed the person who was doing the minutes because all of the minutes got much more detailed.
Yes.
More detailed than I thought they needed to be, but it was almost like it was a.
I'm gonna sign off.
Transcript.
I'm gonna sign off on Zoom because I'm down to six percent battery.
So can we have a motion then to approve all the minutes except for the June twenty and July eighteen ones?
Motion to approve meeting minutes for February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, March seventh, twenty twenty-three, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, April fourth, twenty twenty-three, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three and June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Christine, your updates on anything? Were you just, were you gonna put not vote on one set of them? Did you want that on the record?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, I, well, you know, that's why I read it off the way I read it off, because if you look at the meeting minutes, that means the last two, June twentieth and June eighteenth, we did not.
No, no, no.
Pete's not voting on the twenty-first.
He wasn't here and he said he wasn't gonna vote on that. Oh, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, okay.
Don't, don't record my vote on March twenty-one.
Okay.
Because I, I wasn't here.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mark. Christine, anything further from?
Yes, I have a couple of very exciting announcements. We were notified by DLS, the Department of Revenue, that our free cash has been certified. Our free cash has come in at five million, one hundred and forty-two, three hundred and eleven. I can't remember a time when we've had our free cash certified so early in October. And thank you to Andrew Foster, our town accountant, for getting that done. It's really helping the Warren Committee and the finance team move things forward with our new budget process this year. So thank you again to Andrew. You all have your budget this year? That is the second year we have produced the GFOA Budget Document and Guide. And we were notified late last night that we have won the distinguished budget presentation for the second year in a row.
Nice.
So thank you to everyone, but particularly Frank, who worked incredibly hard, literally the morning after town meeting, putting that all together, so. We are super excited to have that and we'll update the website and put our letter and press release and everything on there. So it's just a really great document. All of the select board have received a copy, every department head and all members of the Warren Committee. So everybody is up to see it on the budget process. Let's see, just a, a small administrative update. As you know, we've had some new staff here at the town hall and we have made the decision that we are going to close early on Halloween. We are closing at four thirty so that people can go and spend Halloween with their families. So after the pumpkin decorating contest, we'll be closing at four thirty.
That's awesome.
Let's see, we are also notified that we received a grant from the Commonwealth to begin our study looking at the efficiency of the grounds department. So we were just notified of that last week, which is great. And I will be speaking at the MMA Boot Camp to new town administrators and those that are crazy enough to think they want to be a town administrator on Thursday between nine and three, so.
Who's hosting it?
Mass Municipal Association.
Uh, where should I say?
Oh, Sharon Community Center.
Oh, that's not bad.
Yeah, so it's a really nice place to have a meeting. It's, it's fantastic, so.
What's that about like?
Yeah, it's beautiful. Yeah, so that's it for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Select board reports, Mr. Murby.
We got a few things. The Medfield Economic Development Vision Committee, which is the group that's taking a look at the reuse of, or shouldn't say reuse, but the optimal development of the North Meadows. but the optimal development of the North Meadows, West Mill, West Street, had a, uh, Zoom meeting update, uh, last week, and, uh, they're doing a good job taking a look, gathering a lot of information. There will be a, uh, public meeting to gather inputs from the public, I think on December fourth.
I think it's December fourth.
So, uh, they, they actually, their next steps are kind of taking a look at, starting to enlist the pu- public, bring the public in, which is gonna be interesting, because we're talking about the industrial extensive zone, uh, so asking the people here in, in Medfield what, uh, you know, what they want in the industrial zones. I'm kind of curious to see what kind of answers we're gonna get to that question myself. Uh, we, part of the, part of the conversation that was interesting, when you start thinking about the area down near where Potpourri was, where, where Seventh Wave Brewing is right now, and the North Star Saki Place is at, it's an interesting area, because, I don't know, for anybody who's been down to Seventh Wave, especially in the summer, it's kind of nice to go there. Uh, their beer is good, their pizza is good, and you're sort of in this secluded little spot, they have lights outside, and it's like, it's, that's not industrial, but it's interesting. You start to see some potential options for what could or couldn't be done in that overall area. Not, some of it's gonna stay industrial, but there may be some new ideas for things that would fit the zone, but be a little different than what we were thinking about, so. Uh, I'm optimistic that's at least gonna lead to some really interesting conversations along the way. Part of the, uh, part of what they did is they took a look at other towns that have basically taken areas of the town that they wanted to rejuvenate. Uh, a lot of their examples have to do with like old mill buildings that are being, that were renovated, and it's like, I don't know that that quite is a match for us, because we're already doing enough of that up at the state hospital without doing more of it somewhere else. Uh, but we had, but still, there's some interesting discussions, and, uh, it'll be interesting to see what the public has to say on that, so that's one. Uh, second thing, I went to the Belle Forge, kind of end of summer, early fall fundraiser on Friday night, uh, which was the, the chocolate and cheese event, so it was a relatively small, wasn't a mass, mass thing, the, the ticket prices were primarily to raise money, uh, and I kind of just wrote it off as sort of like, it was actually the beginning of our anniversary weekend, so, well, you know, Gene's working on Friday night, we could go, who, who doesn't like chocolate and cheese? And, yeah, it's a lot of money, but it's, it's basically supporting Belle Forge. We had a blast. It was so much fun. It was so much fun. Uh, obviously, the cheese, the wine, and the chocolate were all great. Uh, they had, Gene brought in a group, it's called Opera on Tap, which is an organization that has opera singers that you can, that it's like this network, that they go, and so, we had a tent outside by the chapel, and these opera singers, they, we didn't know the guy sitting at our table with us was one of them, until he got up and started singing. Uh, so anyway, it was, it was a total blast. It was extremely well done by, by Gene and, uh, Belle Forge. Uh, it was a worthwhile fundraiser, but, uh, quite frankly, where I just kind of said, ah, we're just writing off a bunch of money, and maybe we'll get a glass of wine. It was, I had way underestimated what Gene was gonna be able to pull off. It was a great time. So that was two. Um, I didn't get to the scarecrow competition on Saturday, but I did go by Baxter Park on Sunday just to look at them. Very impressed. Uh, my biggest impression was, I wonder who the judges were, and I'm glad that I wouldn't have had to pick one of them, because they were so, they were really well done, yeah.
No, they were good, it was really good.
They were really well done, and, uh, so I thought that was cool, and appreciate the people, that, uh, Medfield TV sponsored that Spooktacular. It was a good idea, and, uh, they're still there for people to enjoy. Um, we all got the same email, uh, that came in from Kristen on the school committee regarding the e, the email, and Pete, you may want to comment on this. Uh, she was forwarding a message that had come into the school committee from someone here in town who was concerned about, uh, potential fallout from the Gaza, Israeli Gaza Palestinian conflict, and whether there could be any fallout, you know, from that. Um, and I, I, I responded to Kristen and basically said, you know, I, I think I've already made it clear, I'm not, I'm not in favor of broad, empty rhetorical political statements expounding about the events of the world and how we should think about them, but I am interested in making sure that Medfield stays a safe town. Uh, for everybody. And so, when the conflict first started in, in Israel two weekends ago, I, I kind of mentally saw that as a, you know, as a distant thing that we care about, but in a sense, more intellectual. That, I don't mean like I didn't care, I mean that it was a, a different spot. When I saw the equivocating, ambivalent response here in the United States from university presidents and others, and, and I basically am far more sympathetic to anybody, especially anybody who's directly affected by these, these issues, and we have people who are close to some family members who are as well. Uh, I, my resolve to be willing to do anything we need to do to make sure that things here in this town are safe for all of our residents is, if anything, strengthened. I always, I already had strong feelings about that, but my, my resolve on that is stronger. Uh, I think we also got the email from Chief.
Yes.
Uh, and, and I'm bringing it up here, because people that are listening may not have realized that the police department from the very start, uh, basically, the chief put out guidance for all the police officers to be extra vigilant, to make sure that there are no situations, and, and her message to us was, if you have anybody who talks to you that would benefit from talking to me, please refer them, so. People wouldn't necessarily know that the police had kind of gotten a little straighter in their, in their seats around this thing, and I wanted to point that out, so. Uh, next, the last point I had was, uh, I had a conversation with Rick Fink in regard to the, uh, gazebo park re, renaming. So basically, as you all recall, we approved Rick having a, an event, uh, Thanksgiving week in the, in the park there, when the, when the schools got out at the half day. Part of that was launching this, this balloting process, not a voting process, but a choosing process, uh, of what the, the kids in town would like to hear the park be named. That process is unwound under the supervision of the committee that was formed to do that. He has the winning choice. Uh, but, when we were talking, said, but I don't, we want to do this, un, reveal it at an event, so. He, he was, called me on a couple of things. Number one, he said, well, do, if I want to do something again around Thanksgiving week, do I have to come back to the, the, the Select Board? Then I said, well, yeah, you do, but I'm thinking if what you're trying to do is something that's qualitatively similar to what you wanted to do last year, you could probably just come in and say, I kind of want to do the same kind of thing this year. I've squared it with the Board of Health, and I've squared it with the, uh, the Police Department, and I don't think it has to be a long conversation with us. Uh, he then said, did the Select Board need to approve the name for the park? And I, I was trying to remember what we did with McCarthy Park and with, uh, Straw Hat Park, and I don't recall that we voted to approve it. Did, did we?
They went to town, I believe they went to town meeting.
Just the name?
I think Straw Hat Park did.
I think at least Straw Hat Park, I think.
I don't remember. I have to check for you. I don't remember. I know we took some, it might have been McCarthy that went to, one, one of them did go to town meeting, so I'd have to go back and check.
So, I'm surprised that we would have taken just the name. If we, if we basically took the land and the na, use of the land and the name, I would, well, anyway. Here's, the reason I'm bringing this up is because what I told Rick is, I said, look, you've already gone through a process that the, the Select Board approved. It was overseen by a committee of people that were credible representatives from the town. We said we wanted this, this, the children of the town to be able to make this decision. They have, so I don't think you have to come to the Select Board to get approval, but I said, but I want to bring it up tonight, because Pete and Eileen may have a different view. Uh, now, what you're raising, Christine, is there may be, if there's a legal issue, it's not a choice, that's different.
Well, I think at the very least, Care Custody could, whatever.
We have Care Custody control.
Right, so I think you, it's at the very least, you have that authority and obligation.
Well, so, so.
So it should come back here, then?
So if it comes back here, then the only thing we have to figure out is how to have it come back here, get approval for something that Rick wanted to have an event revealing. Maybe we can just tell you can't reveal it. We have to tell, we have to tell everybody, because the Select would want to basically decide whether they're gonna override all the kids in town, how they voted, or.
Because you, if we vote on it, we're giving out the name versus announcing the name the day you want to do the reveal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me, let me think, let me think about the process.
There may be a way around that.
You have, you have.
Because I don't know if that qualifies for executive session.
Right.
But it, it doesn't have to be.
So, so anyway, I told, I told Rick.
Negotiation and land, property interest?
I told Rick.
We're gonna sobering, then we can talk about an executive session.
The other, the other question that Rick had is that he's looking at having a sign designed for it. Uh, he's talked with Jean about how she did stuff, so he's, you know, he's not just making this stuff up as he goes along. And he basically said, and, and I said, you probably should come to the Select Board to, to let the Select, just like Jean did with Straw Hat Park. The installation was in place, but then we kind of had an official opening when the sign was there, so I think, so he's talking about a soft opening that reveals the name, and then perhaps a formal opening when the sign is in place. I suggested that he should, it would be courteous for him to, to come to us and let us know what he's thinking about there, just to make sure we're okay with the location. Uh, I suggested he go to the Sign Committee to make sure he stayed within the boundaries, but I'm guessing if he makes a sign, he's looking at a sign comparable to Straw Hat Park. I don't think he's running off the rails. Uh, and then, he has a member of the committee that's actually on the library, uh, staff, and I think is a member of the Library Board, so I said, from a courtesy standpoint, I'd let the library know, not that they have Care Custody control, but it's right outside their door.
Yeah, just a neighborhood thing to do.
So, he, he, I think, will come in on the fourteenth to kind of give us the concept. We'll have to let him know before the fourteenth whether he has to reveal the name, or whether we can somehow or other officially, maybe we can officially endorse the vote of the, yeah, that was had.
He stands in the corner, and Mike doesn't get the camera near him, and we just see it?
Well, that, that might work.
And then Bill's up to Bill, how much does he spread around town?
So that's what I had. That's it.
Okay, Eileen.
Alrighty. Okay, so, uh, I'll kick off with the event that I attended this past Saturday, which was the Medfield TV Spook. Oh, Mike, what was the official title?
Spooktacular.
Spooktacular.
Spooktacular, I've got tongue tied there. Um, well-attended, lot of fun. Once again, Mother Nature held off. We didn't get the rain that they were anticipating. Um, but it was really fun. They had really two separate contests going on. They had, uh, costume contests, these little munchkins that were absolutely freaking adorable going across the stage, and then, um, they went through different age groups, and a couple of the costumes were phenomenal. Like, it was really fun. And you know what? First year, but I think if they continue to do this, I think you're gonna find, like they do for the soccer, the three-on-threes, and everyone gets in a costume. I could see this four, five, six years down the road. This is what families look forward to doing, getting their kids in the, you know, the costume mode, and then, the scarecrows were, some of them were. I mean, all of them were great, but some of them were like, unbelievably, the, the one that.
What with the woman's head on, it was spooky.
The, the, the scary, uh, scarecrow one was amazing. I think that the MAP kids did that, but well-attended, kudos to Medfield TV and everyone. It was really fun. Um, I didn't get a chance to go to the Friday night event at Belle Forge, because I blew my knee out and I couldn't really go too far, but, um, I did get up there with, uh, Rooney, because I could be off-leash, and he couldn't drag me, because I was on a crutch, um, but I walked by the Saturday event, and they had a really nice turnout, so I was happy for, for Jean, um, again, Mother, the Mother Nature holding off for her. Um, I did come to the Town Hall a week or so ago with, with Christine, and we pulled a lottery for, um, on, for the enclave, enclave, and is everything going smoothly there?
As far as I know.
Okay, good, that's good to know. Um, and then I did sit in last Thursday, the Medfield Cares About Prevention Leadership Team meeting. It was really good. Um, I love what they're trying to do. It's all to, to get a grant for some funding. They, they applied for this, um, in the past, and it got denied, so this whole new team is brought together uh, so that they can kind of check the boxes that they, they think might have impacted them not winning it before, um, so I, I look forward to, um, everything that's going on there. Um, we, I went to the Affordable Housing Trust meeting last week. Uh, we reviewed four forty-one. I think that's going smoothly. No hiccups there, Christine, right? I think that's good. Um, Medfield Housing Authority, they were supposed to have a meeting this past Thursday. It's actually going on as we speak, and I think Candace was going to be there to present some updates with Brian regarding the, uh, Rose Bay. Uh, group homes, Newton, um, is continuing various discussions, um, and I think had a conference call the very next day with you and Trinity. Yes, so that went well, for just discussions for potential of the state hospital. Um, Habitat for Humanity, um, uh, we discussed a couple of lots in town that are being evaluated, but, uh, we'll talk more at our next meeting. Hinkley South, I'd give them a heads up on the lottery, and then Medfield State Hospiti, Hospital, excuse me, um, we talked about, um, Trinity. We did talk about how Trinity was going to be having that meeting the next morning regarding group homes. And then Maria has, uh, scheduled on October twenty-sixth, the MBTA Info Session for Boards, um, at the Medfield Public Safety Building. Um, that's taking place at six PM, so I think there's quite a few people from town that have been invited to sit in on that Q and A.
That's on the, um, MBTA zoning.
Yes, yes. And then, uh, I will see you all, I believe, this Thursday night for the Committee Board Event at Zulo Gallery?
Thursday evening, seven o'clock.
And let me see if that is all I have. That is all I have.
Okay, thank you. I had, uh, two Medfield Foundation meetings, one the regular foundation and one the Legacy Fund. Uh, I did go to the Spooktacular as well, and, uh, I really liked the, uh, the kids.
Oh, the adorable.
The ones with the, uh, the, the umbrellas, and they were.
They were little Martian, like, they were like flying around in ships.
They were blinking, they were really cool. They were, and they were homemade.
I wanted one as a, as an adult.
The, uh, uh, E, Energy Committee had a, a meeting, and, uh, let's see, uh, Penny talked to us a lot about, actually, about forty percent of the gas from a boiler heat goes to warm the fresh air that's coming in for ventilation, and there, there, I guess there are better ways for doing that, so that maybe you don't always want to replace a boiler, but maybe you just want to work on the, on, on having a better system for warming the ventilation that you're bringing in. Uh, Andrew Jarrell had, uh, done a, a set of term sheets, I guess, for RFPs for the, uh, the twenty-year plans for, uh, the town, uh, infrastructure, which appealed to me a lot, because it was very similar to the sort of stuff that I'd been suggesting to us, that the MACC did. Uh, you remember I gave you those, uh, materials from the MACC about their protocols for Everett, uh, Medford, uh, Everett, Medford. It was maybe one or two other towns, uh, as to ways, uh, that the town should proceed with regard to buildings, basically, but it, it was things like trying to discourage fossil fuels and that sort of thing, uh, as, as town protocols, and so that Jarrell, Jarrell's working on that for, for that, uh, RFPs for the town. Um, someone was working on electric buses, two to three, uh, three to four towns coming together. I guess, uh, Hillary Passas had been working on that, but, uh, I think that she's kind of stepped back in the, because it's a school issue, really, um. And then, uh, and we drafted a, uh, a resolution of thanks for Fred Davis for all he's done for the town through the Energy Committee. I had, uh, office hours, and, uh, our, our new, uh, school building committee member was there about his water issues, and a couple, three other people came by. And then I had a, a meeting, I was asked to attend a meeting, uh, of Select Board Chairs about the Tri-County New School, and there were Select Board Chairs from Norfolk, Melles, Sherburne, Medway, Walpole, Plainville, and me, and, uh, I hadn't paid a lot of attention to this when I saw the, uh, cost, uh, to Medfield for this.
It wasn't bad, they were here.
It was ten dollars a year for, or eleven, under eleven dollars a year per household. Um, the cost for all these other towns is a lot more, so they're.
They have more kids.
So they're all up in arms about it, and, uh, and, and the, the points that they make is that fifty percent of the kids that, uh, that graduate are basically going to college, so it's not, it's not a school that teaches apparently the, prepares kids for the trades. It's basically a pre-engineering school in, in many ways. Um, and, uh.
Can you mention the vote, October, is it October twenty-fourth?
October twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yeah, the vote's coming up. And they're, they're also, um, having another meeting. And they're, they're also, um, having another meeting tomorrow night, actually. They've invited all the state reps to talk to us, because their, their feeling is that it really should, uh, there should be state support for this, rather than just, uh, pushing it off onto the property taxes of all the towns.
But I think the way they positioned it to us, though, is that the first school was built by the town, by the, by the state.
It was.
And now, um, for a new school, they're pushing it back on the, on the towns that are actually supporting it with, by having kids go there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what's happening. It's a very expensive school. I mean, it's two hundred and fif, two hundred and eighty-five million, and, and they cited some of the things. I wasn't aware of all the details, because I hadn't been paying attention to it, because it, it impacted us so little financially, but apparently there are, uh, bleachers in, in the auditorium that move in and out, and they're, they're rebuilding all the fields, which someone said they didn't think was very necessary. Your, uh, chair from Medway, Glenn Trindale, is that his name? He was there. He was very, uh, very knowledgeable about it.
Well, they've taken a big interest.
And very opposed to it, yeah.
So what happens if, uh, if the towns, all it's gonna take is all of the people that vote just have one, one, one more yes and a no?
Yeah, it's like a super, one super municipality.
Okay.
And, uh, and, and what these people said was that the, um, the schools having all of their alums.
Promote it.
Promote it.
Yep.
One of the things, I think, there was an earlier meeting that I, I was at, at the high school, and they were, before they came here to see us, and Glenn was at that. And he, if, if this is true, I can sympathize with why he would be concerned. Basically, the project gets approved if one more vote, person votes for the project than votes against it. So for a town like ours, if we had a big turnout, there's no, we have very little skin in the game.
Yeah.
And yet our votes count just like anybody else's. What Glenn said that surprised me at this meeting was, if that vote, if that vote passes, if the election in October passes, and if you're a town like Medway where you, you have to pay for it through a debt override, and then you go into town meeting to get approval of a debt override.
Doesn't pass.
Then it doesn't pass, then what happens, I guess, is it wreaks havoc on your town budget, because you're still on the hook.
Yep.
To pay for it. But if that debt override doesn't pass in your town, because people are mad about how much your town has to pay, then it could turn into a real disaster for the town budget. And that was the ra, that was the issue he brought up.
Some of the towns.
Sympathetic with that. It's been an issue I'd be concerned about if I were in that situation. We're not, but he is.
Some of the towns have actually scheduled debt override votes for the day of the election on the, on the new school, but, because they wanted to bring home to people the fact that there are serious financial consequences, so.
Yeah.
So, well, I'll let you know what the state.
I saw a graph, um, and like, uh, Plainville ironically is really getting whacked, because proportionately, although they may not have absolutely that many kids going, it's because they're a smaller town, so it's a larger percentage. They, they have, uh, they have a significant hit.
I think Plainville's in support of it.
And North Attleboro as well.
Right.
Plainville's, uh, uh, tax impact is over three hundred per house.
Right. I thought they weren't, I thought the, they had the Selectman there, I thought was in favor of it.
Yeah, two eighty-four. Yep. Uh, and then the last thing I'll mention is, uh, I, I read Christine's financial forecast that she gave us at our last meeting, and I really liked that, so thank you for doing that for the town. And that's it for me. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.